Welcome, everybody, to the July 20th, September 21st. I'm a fan of myself. Meeting of the Southway Hall Township Commissioners. I ask before we do our vocal event, will please rise and join in this meeting.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Can we do a little poll? Please, your name. Commissioner Walkes.
Yes.
Commissioner Walk.
Yes.
Commissioner Seton.
Yes.
Commissioner Morton.
Yes.
Tracy, would you be so kind as to read the public meeting virtual meeting rules?
Sure. All meetings are electronically recorded. Participants' names will not be displayed during the meeting. All participants will be required to mute their microphones when not participating in the dialogue. If a participant, like for example, who wants to make public comment or has a question on a specific topic, they must type their name and address in the chat feature. The meeting facilitator will identify and call on the individual requesting to speak. If someone is participating via phone, there will be an opportunity to ask questions, comment. Once the individual has unmuted their microphone and identified themselves, name and address. If someone has requested courtesy of the floor prior to the meeting via email, the facilitator will identify and call on the individual who has requested courtesy of the floor. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. I'd like to note that all public sessions of the Southway Hall Township Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted on Board Docs. That being said, we'll move right into our agenda this evening. And first on our agenda for discussion and possible action are our July 7, 2021 VOC meeting minutes. Are there any questions or comments from the board on the July 7 meeting minutes?
I just have one clarification. The resolution that we passed for the extension to the Ares bring you. There was a date that was wrong in that resolution. It said that we had extended last on 12/23/20. That was not a Board of Commissioners meeting. We actually voted on January 6th of 21. It's not in the resolution we voted on. The resolution is not included in the minutes.
Diana, please.
It's not in the minutes. It's the resolution that was part of the meeting. The actual resolution isn't posted in its entirety here. The minutes, it's not in the minutes itself.
Well, it's the resolution we passed, page eight, Ares bring new commercial. But that actual resolution hadn't heard in the date. Prior date was extended on the resolution itself, so 12/23/20. We did not have a Board of Commissioners meeting that day. But we did extend that from the line January 6th of 21. Tracy, maybe you can look back on that resolution at those dates. But in general, those dates aren't mentioned in the minutes. So are there any questions on the minutes themselves? I just have one question regarding, I know we had a conversation in our vacancy board meeting about the Sunshine Act and needing to post the names of citizens who appear in the subject of testimony in our minutes. And on page two of our meeting minutes, two-thirds of the way down the page, it says, "Board questions followed by public questions with answer at this time." And I just want to ask if that satisfies the requirement of the Sunshine Act to post the names of the citizens who appear in our meetings.
I think the Sunshine Act, doesn't it say that it has to be, it has to be in the official capacity? My thing, maybe some clarification needs to be made upon that. Because I think, like, when people just come in, we don't normally put them in and when, officially, they speak under courtesy of the floor, and that's when we, we need to put their name and their address and then the topic.
I'm going to recommend the minutes be tabled for this evening for further considerations.
Do you have the motion table?
I have one more comment. Is what you're saying? You have minor point, page five, third paragraph, second sentence, which begins with Randy Coak said. It looks like an incomplete sentence, so maybe just go back and check actually what it says, because it seems incomplete.
And what page do you start again, Mike?
Page five, like, the third paragraph, the second sentence. And Randy may have said it.
Okay, we have the motion on the floor. We have a second to table the minutes, so we get some, give a second. Motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly, second from Commissioner Seton. I'll have a little poll, please, your name. Commissioner Walk?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Seton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Morton?
Yes.
All right, let's table those minutes. Looking over to your legal opinion on that, Attorney Sater. Thank you. All right, next this evening, we have no presentations, however, we have two ordinances for consideration and possible action. The first is a, actually, before I do that, Randy, were there any questions or comments?
Nothing in the chat.
Nothing in the chat. Good. The first ordinance for possible action this evening is an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of Southway Hall Township to add new Chapter 250 entitled Quality of Life Improvement Ordinance, which provides, one, a ticketing program to potentially resolve certain property maintenance and other property violation matters in a more spacious manner than the traditional ordinance enforcement; and, two, procedures for issuing tickets under the ticketing program; and, three, preserves traditional ordinance enforcement; and further provides perseverance, ability to enforce non waiver applicability and other dates. Mr. Hunter, welcome.
It's on the bottom.
Is that not turning on?
I'll try.
Hold up, hold up, let's go out, we have a hearing. Can we have a portable mic?
There you go.
That's good.
You may have to talk into it.
You may have to hold it close, close to you, because they don't hear in the background.
Hold it closer. That's better, yeah, keep it close.
All right, thanks. Good evening, commissioners, and I am here regarding the option of quality of life ordinance. This ordinance presents economic uses and claims received from the residents by use of several enforcement methods seeks to achieve compliance and more speed and manner than traditional issuance of citation. As previously mentioned in the last meeting, this ordinance allows for the issuance of violation tickets, which normally is a traditional method, is to issue the citation violation or see the court process, which might not hold itself in time, and the property may not be brought up in an accident period. The violation ticketing is allowed for a set amount, no sensitive work cost, and time spent for all parties. The ordinance does allow for the violation of the bill of the ticket. The last meeting, there were some questions that the commissioners had brought up, and it's important to discuss. I did some research regarding those questions. One of them was the placement of Google time issued political signs that was raised by Commissioner Kelly. Several municipalities in the area have set times in their ordinance for either the before and or after political sign placement. For example, Hanover Township is 16 days before, seven days after. Whitehall Township is 45 days before, 10 days after. Fountain Hill Borough is 45 days before, 10 days after. Upland Township is 60 days before and 10 days after. North Whitehall is 45 days before, seven days after. Maynard Borough is 60 days before, 14 days after. Potengie and Upper Potengie Townships are seven days after. Palmer Township and Keller Town Borough are 21 days after. Five feel the fine brave ordinance that is in line with the municipality in the area. In addition, some other research I did regarding the imprisonment clause concerned of Commissioner Seton, I've noted, I've noted that several of the township ordinances, there's language indicating in, in or a 230 or 98 imprisonment, which is in line with PA 1814, that's in section 11, 05, that's an imprisonment for summary offenses, which finds that the person who has been convicted of a summary offense may be sentenced to imprisonment for a term which shall not be fixed by the court, but cannot be over the 90 days. Since the issuance of a citation would be for a summary offense, this language would be appropriate as stated in the ordinance. The length of 90 days keeps it in line with the current adopted primary code provision. Then there was a question regarding the issuing of notices to first time offenders. Under section 250, that's 12, the ordinance, it states that the township manager can establish guidelines or enforcement procedures of publishing. So if you move to adopt this ordinance, enforcement document, and put in place, publish on the township website, steps such enforcement. Some of those steps, as far as for the first time offenders, would be to talk to the person responsible for the party by the phone or person or at the property, to be a door opener at the door, state what the violation is, and reasonable correction time, or you can send by a regular mail to the responsible party, a written warning that outlines the nature of the violation, your preference, and penalty for compliance. So with that said, I just want to say that the passage of this ordinance, again, will provide another tool, beginning compliance reduces violations of the township. And finally, I did receive a thank you card from the resident that I spoke about at the last meeting for taking the bold and important first type of precedent for property issues. So at this time, if you, Dorni, would like to add anything?
This is very similar to the ordinance that we, at the time, actually wrote for the city of downtown. And on the part of the police department, one of the issues that we face is, we see violations that we can't typically enforce. Therefore, it gives us the ability to enforce some of those minor issues as quality of life issues right then and there versus order reports to code enforcement, zoning, somebody else to address them, and then it goes through a long lengthy process. By the time that they then go out to investigate on their own, maybe it's corrected, which is great either way, but it's a very successful program for us as law enforcement that we feel is if we see things that we can dress right then and there, that we can take care of it. And again, this is going to be an educational based program. This isn't going to be where you put a bunch of cops out there to write citations to people because they don't know their grass. That's not what it's about. It's about making sure that your neighbors are good neighbors, they're following the rules, and if they don't know the rules, then we educate them on the rules. So this is not something that is just strictly an enforcement program on the side of the police. It's something that we can actually address, and then, you know, we kind of have a saying that not all bad drivers are criminals, but a lot of criminals are bad drivers. So it's another tool that we can utilize that if people are up to criminal activity against us, kind of an opportunity to have an encounter with them, and maybe it leads to something else. But it's something that the police department can enforce and address when we see it. So I think it's a great program, and again, it will serve off, just like the noise ordinance did, with an educational based program. We hand out those flyers on a rank of the basis for noise complaints, and issue very, very, very few citations so far. So I think it seems to be working.
And I am going to agree with Chief Dorni. Education would be a great component regarding this, and if it doesn't pass, we're looking to put something into the township newsletter that is coming out shortly. So at this time, I'll take any questions or comments, and again, thank you for your time.
Chief, are there any questions from the board, the ordinance in front of us this evening?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I would thank you, Tom, and Chief Dorni for retaining this new ordinance. I'm drawn to a few things. So in, in here, there's a definition of public nuisance, and it's got a few sentences that describe what a public nuisance is. And I guess it's the part where it says, if it's unlawful, that's probably easy to define because there's a law, and one would point to a law, and it could be something that could be understood and managed pretty objectively. But there's other words in here that say nuisance that's unreasonable or indecent. My question really is, I know it's very general, right, but how would one objectively assess whether something was unreasonable or indecent?
Let's say, for example, you know, you come to get a complaint regarding a property, and there's a whole bunch of stuff all over the front of the property, or very hard regulations, you know, appliance is, other things. The reasonable is that, that it's normal, the neighborhood, when you look at the sense of the neighborhood, it's not like everybody is doing that. So there is a sense of that, you find out by, you know, and maybe there is a good reason maybe, sometimes you run, maybe have a flood in your basement, et cetera. So as far as the nuisance, public nuisance go, there is a discretion that you find, and it comes down to whether or not, you know, is it having an effect on the neighbors? How long is it going to be there? You know, what steps does a person take to try to correct this? Or is there a binary where, does a person need help as far as trying to get something addressed, and there's a way to put a point of correction? So there is, you know, anything can constitute a nuisance to you, could constitute a nuisance to me. But over the years, you know, you have to be a neutral part of, you know, where it might not be aesthetically pleasing to you, it might not be a problem.
All right, okay, thank you. So there's a couple of positions for roles that are in here. There's the public officer role, and then there's the appeals officer role. What are the qualifications to serve in either one of these roles, and what education and training is required? And when we, when we go to recruit somebody for this role, there's nothing in here that says, and the person shall have these qualifications.
I don't, personally, I don't know what the current job description is for a code enforcement officer. I think that you didn't have the experience, obviously. So I would say, the experience is maybe one, you know, the degree possibly. As far as the appeals officer goes, normally that's a in-house person, like, I'm doing ones for noise on their police, and Chief Dorni would be the ones for this ordinance, because I would be like, this is so impossible. But it's the understanding of the law, and if someone doesn't approve the appeal, they can always appeal it as well.
Is there going to be a job description with the qualifications?
I think it's something that can be developed.
Who's going to be accountable to recruit, interview, hire, assess the performance of discipline, and if necessary, terminate either an appeal officer or a public officer? Where is the?
This isn't an addition, this isn't an addition to staff. These are people who are existing here who currently have the role of enforcing current ordinances. So a public officer means a police officer who will enforce the code. So it's not.
If it means self, if it means building officer, building code officer, the police, you know, any, I was current, I'm sorry.
Just, just to clarify what Renee said, I, I didn't read in here that these were necessarily policemen. I, I read appeals officer and public officer. Are those policemen?
Yeah, but I police enforce our ordinances. That's the role, that's the elements. Or public official, I mean, a police officer will enforce ordinances.
Okay. Under section 250-10 enforcement, revisions of this sort shall be enforced by the Southway Hall Police Officer or any public officer or otherwise. So anybody who was sworn in to such a resolution.
Zoning officer can, a public code official can, a building, they leave, that's all built into their job description already. We're not hiring somebody as a public official to enforce this.
So we're going to have these two roles, and we'll have policemen code's roles, is that how it's going to work? I think that's where you're coming.
We'll have police, we'll have zoning officers, we have code enforcement officers. So again, they will uphold the ordinance.
The primary will be code. And like Chief Dorni said, if his office is around there and addressing something, that if something in this ordinance comes out while they're there, they will address it there on the spot. They're not going to go out of their way and support any of these ordinances. All right.
All right, to give you an example of some of the things that we faced in the city, city of downtown, Tom, if you can correct me, that you're allowed to have like three yard sales a year or something like that. There were now code enforcement in the city of downtown, Monday through Friday, eight o'clock. Every single weekend at residences in the city, they would have a sale every Friday or every Saturday or every Sunday. They would do it every weekend. We didn't have code enforcement to enforce that, so the police officers were allowed to use the sweep violation to address that at the time, rather than forward a report to the code officer, and they couldn't investigate it properly. So we would do it, and we were able to do that and curb the problems. And that's the kind of things that I can envision the police department addressing, things that are occurring when code enforcement is not available to take care of. And if we go there and we forward it to them, they weren't able to investigate it or substantiate it, and if we are, then we would address it. But this is not something that the police department is going to go out and look to see if you're mowing your grass or doing any of these violations, especially when code, Monday through Friday, something is available, we would call it to investigate and handle it properly. But if it is a weekend, it's in a one building problem that we have on a regular basis, we would absolutely have to.
Okay, thank you. So when we end this, who was the public officer and the appeals officer?
Apparently, I'm a public officer, as a public enforcement, and language, Chief Dorni, probably the appeals officer.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board?
I just have a comment to say that this ordinance is very necessary, and it's good to have, I mean, very, it's comforting to know that Harper has cleared the first offenders going to be void filing, or they may find, I think that's whether it should be done.
Any other questions from the board?
Yes, I have a comment to make. Under, I mean, just feel what Mike just said, but under nuisance definition number 15, showing something offensive, annoying to individuals, I, I find language like that to be subjective. And what might be innocent to me might really aggravate my neighbor more than that, and I find some of that language throughout here. Now, why, I do not disagree that there are probably provisions in our code enforcement that need strengthening. I believe we do have already a limit on yard sales and how many you can have a year. So if we're looking to fix a problem that we have with our current ordinance, as I understand it, some of the language in here is very subjective, and I feel it opens the door to putting on who your neighbor is and how they define nuisance. Could create a whole lot more problems than the ones that we're trying to solve with this ordinance. I will speak once again, as I did the last time, this was before us, about political signs. I understand that township has tried to get a handle on, we call them dead signs, so the ones that say, move your junk, or for some of the developments in town, former staff used to go around and pick them up. I understand we might need to strengthen those provisions so that we have ability to break violations and whatnot. But when we step into political signs, personally, I don't believe that's something that should be included in this ordinance, and I do, I do not agree with that particular provision as well.
Good point, your name.
And I appreciate you doing the research with the other townships, and that's, that's wonderful. But I asked the question to myself, is there a huge problem in this township, and do we need to enact an ordinance against it all?
One, one of the things that we did this past year regarding cases, like I said before, we sent a letter to both political parties explaining what is, you know, how we're going to go about these signs. Honestly, the signs that I got, I had no complaints about, the ones that were being placed there, you know, where they are. There was a constant sign replaced there, and that's public property. So we did remove it, and the way the letter was stipulated was that if your sign was removed, just give us a call, we have it here, coming in, and we weren't throwing it away. You know, there's a possibility of all, you know, for the candidate. And we did have a candidate come, it was gracious how we could assign. You know, but it just gives a little leverage, because right outside down the corner here, there's been two political signs sitting there, it's after the election, or some state judges or something like that.
Just going to say that there's.
Yeah, and, and McCun, I think it's McCun, not McCun, yeah, I think Whitehall, I don't know, considered litter, in their words. So after a certain amount of time, it's considered litter, and they pop up on the table. So I understand what you're saying, I mean, we do everything, you know, we're not just going to go around picking people's signs, you know, the ones you see at the corners or areas, which are technically in, and on the right ways, and on those walls too, regarding that. So it's just something in here, we're not touching anything on private property whatsoever. It's just public property, parks and things like that, that, you know, and we're not letting any signs in the parks. So we're be covering all avenues there, where we're not going to say, well, white and I put my, my sign that says, you know, pick up this, they're putting political signs in the public park. So kind of gives us a little leverage on that. And honestly, we will work with the candidates, if we get their sign, they call, we better know it's here, if we don't pick it up.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Of these signs that you take back with you, are they subjective?
We did not find any in the election. In the future, and honestly, we collected, I'm going to say maybe half a dozen, if that. In the future, I mean, we'll, we'll do it the same way. The letter will go to the parties, if we see them in the parks, you know, we constantly see, we'll try to get ahold of the person and say, hey, you know, here's what the ordinance states about putting them there, and the stipulation that the letter that the parties get will have to be fortified.
I think at the end of the day, this is the dis- ordinance, and the version of this ordinance that you prepared, these systems, and the entire team, we're not, we're not the makers and creators. This has been done in other places, and it has been extremely effective. I think, I think it's very important, we give it the opportunity to be initiated, and if there are some minor issues with it as we go along, same exact thing that we did with the noise ordinance, we'll address them. Every little piece of it, we may not pick up today, but we'll figure it out as we go along. As you said, it's an education program. I think the intentions are right and correct, and for our community, and we should start with something and make it move. That will, I like it. Asher, are there any other questions from the board? Before we go to public talk? Mr. Browning?
I will forego the mic. My, I'm talking to you, this system is not working, you should have a little microphone mounted here. Dean Browning, 2432 West Congress Street. I believe that any ordinance should be crafted to address an identified need or a problem, and it should be tailored for just those specific issues. This proposed ordinance does not come close to that, in my opinion. It covers a wide range.
I will forego the mic. My, I'm talking to you, this system is not working. You should have a little microphone mounted here. Dean Browning, 2432 West Congress Street. I believe that any ordinance should be crafted to address an identified need or a problem. It should be tailored for just those specific issues. This proposed ordinance does not come close to that, in my opinion. It covers a wide range of topics with many of those being petty, small, and ill upon. This ordinance goes far beyond addressing wider properties. It covers many, many small, even significant issues. It greatly increases the power of township bureaucrats. And I know you can say this is an educational program and you're talking about mending it, but you're writing and making statements that you can't back up. Because six months from now, two, possibly three of your commissioners up here will be different. We don't know how long this gentleman will be in this position. And what will remain is what is the letter of the law in this ordinance and that's what will be enforced. It is going to result in intrusive enforcement measures. And I'll give, and some of these things are just idiotic and I'll give you a few examples. Section 250-Rodex 3A, Letter 3B, says that if I have a car and it's parked in my driveway for over three days, I can be over a weekend. And if by some chance I've forgotten to have inspected within the designated time period, or if I choose not to, as was the case during COVID, consider it to be abandoned and I could be fined. And come on, standing in my own driveway, I could be fined. So are we really going to have and use taxpayer dollars and people go around checking inspection stickers on cars parked in people's driveway? What problem does that solve? I'll give you another example. Section 250-8G1 says that even in your own backyard, you're a criminal if you do not pick up dog poop within 24 hours in your own backyard. I didn't know that this was such a huge problem in the township. Does that mean that we're going to have content employees or the police staking out backyards to sequence 500s and business and come back the next day and make sure it's been picked up? Because if you don't, that says that you're going to subject to be fined. Again, I'm not quite sure what problem that's addressing and I wasn't aware that it was a huge issue within South Whitehall Township. Commissioner Wall and Commissioner Kelly talked about this specific language. I'll give you an example. Section 250-8H says that 20 pools shall be maintained in good repair and kept safe. Nobody will argue about that. But if they're not in a, if you send another, ask each of you to write down what maybe is a safe pool, what is a pool that's in good repair, I probably would get 12 different answers. Again, I wasn't aware that it was such a huge problem in South Whitehall Township that we have unsafe pools that we need to address. Another example, section 250-8I3 says if I and one of my neighbors are running a snowblower and some of that snow drifts onto or is inherently blown into the street, then suddenly we would be subject to fines. Again, is that a huge problem? And I know in my neighborhood, when we have a huge snowfall, all of us get together, we go to the surrounding neighborhood and clean out driveways and sidewalks. And many in practice, we did blow the snow in the street because the street files cannot come through and we wanted to plow it out of the way. But if we do that in the future, we are going to be subject to fines. These are just a few examples that should convince everyone that this ordinance is a massive overreach that drives, addresses non-existent problems and results in arbitrary and capricious enforcement. I know somebody mentioned the town in town and how it works in town. I work for me, you know, this live in South Whitehall Township precisely because it's not town in town and we don't want town brought into South Whitehall Township. It should concern everyone that the ordinance involves the South Whitehall Township Police Department as one of the means of enforcement. The South Whitehall Township Police Department should be focused on keeping us safe from crime, not on issuing tickets to dog poop. This ordinance gives a huge amount of power to the township bureaucrats and work to require neighbors to turn in to inform us. And on that last line, if you don't think that's a problem, you should go back and read the letters to the other through the morning call from this past fall. A township resident wrote in complaining and suggesting that somebody should be fined because they had a party with people in their house and those people were not wearing masks. This person wrote a letter to the morning call, this person took pictures, this person posted things on the internet. So again, we have residents in South Whitehall Township that will look at the opportunity to turn their neighbors in and this ordinance will give them that ability to do that. Again, this is a bad, bad ordinance. It does not solve any pressing needs and the negative is far outweighed the positives. It should be voted down and sent back to the drawing board. Please vote no on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Anybody else? Brian.
Brian, 11273 X Road, Long Island. I like the ordinance because it would help with some of my neighbor issues perhaps during the half. I can only second point out, and previously pointed out, safety inspection stickers, I mean the definitions. Certain vehicles do not need to be safety inspected, such as my 1970 Corvette with an empty license plate under the vehicle hood, it may not need to be safety inspected. So my vehicle doesn't have to stay inspected. It's a little bit of a clarity. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Anybody else's ordinance?
Sam Shackle, 1898 Blue Room Room. I think like four or five years ago, we would consider something like this and did not pursue it. My recommendation for you, Dean, that this is overreach by the township. At that same time, I asked the per se neighbor if there are any ordinances on the books that this would help out. And basically, it was a situation where whatever was on the books could be enforced. If there's a particular ordinance that needs to be fine tuned, I suggest that the board pick that ordinance and do that rather than do what I'm going to consider here, park launch reinforcement or enforcement given to code enforcement or whoever would be involved. So my question for where you will be to think about it and Commissioner Sutton, I would say go when you're good. Last meeting, you had some questions, although you decided advertising ordinance. And I think you want to go with your best feeling and vote no on the ordinance. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who's going to comment? Anybody in the chat?
Nothing in the chat.
Commissioner Moore, I'd like to make one follow up. Thank you for your comments, sir. We do have the International Parking Maintenance Code, which is a standardized code that does govern nuisances in a township truly defined. We do have it on the books. So yes, to your question, we do have that. One comment that I wasn't able to make, it got a little distracting here, is this ordinance also streamlines the right of appeal. It says the resident may request a meaning to appeal and a request may be granted at the sole discretion of the appeal officer. So right now, we have a building and field board that a resident would come with four, five or six members on that board. So this ordinance will give sole discretion to one person to agree or deny a hearing. And again, I feel like the residents right now have ample opportunity under our current tone to be heard if they've got an issue, they've got rights and due process. And this, I feel, would pull back on that and it does concern me, the language is. Thank you.
Tom, if you have more to add?
I just, just a comment. Some of my issues that I had last meeting were primarily the ones that had a sign. The offenders, that was definitely because say also that happy with students that have expired. How anybody's, was it since its private properties, much how the force opened the backyard because it's public. And how, you know, how disturbing it is to the neighbor. Snow, same thing, I can understand how busy it can be. I do have, I think I think we might need to do those violations. Make them more South Whitehall violations, violations that might be. So that would be, I think, personally, that this should be probably tabled today and those violations should be.
Commissioner Sutton, I just follow up with you. I shared that same concern about a particular, a warning first. And under Section 250-10 Enforcement, Section B, any violation of the provisions of this ordinance may be caused at the discretion of the issuing officer to issue a warning, a notice of violation, a violation ticket, and/or a citation to be issued. If violations are continuous or egregious, the issuing officer has the right to issue a citation without issuing a warning, a notice of violation, or a violation ticket. So I don't know what concerns you had at the last meeting. I still see that they're here. It's the same language. I mean, it does give the discretion of the officer to give a ticket or a warning. So we're talking about educating people.
As a mention and warning or more more language from Mr. Harper regarding the education and warnings and putting warning signs for offenders, et cetera, that comforted me. I'm happy with that. Also happy with the officer having to make their own decisions whether they should be fined or not. If that, that will be done properly. However, again, there are some violations that were put forth here tonight that to be addressed.
I think, I think Sam, you might have mentioned it. We've been talking as a board, whether it was this existing board or the prior board, for quite a few years about concerns and issues that have been coming to your department and the township in general over the years. So I will say this, I think, I don't think the ordinance, as far as the issues that are outlined in it, isn't, are an overreach. These are things that I think has been carefully thought out because it's been many years in the making of the issues and concerns that are happening right here in South Whitehall Township. Now, are all of these things going to make everybody happy? Probably not. I mean, I'm sure there's going to be things in here that people are going to say, yeah, I don't want that, or oh, no, that's good, or that affects me, or that doesn't affect me. It's never, it's never going to make everybody in this room 100% happy or everybody out of the public. The intention of this ordinance, my understanding, is to create an environment where we can ensure the quality of life for every resident in this township. There is discretion allowed in this and there should be discretion allowed in this. There is an education process in it and there should be an education process in it. So I believe that there are things in here that if you take them to the nth degree, they sound really, really harsh. They probably do. But if you look at any ordinance, I mean, we could probably go through all of our ordinances and there's going to be many of them that have the same type language. Yes, they're going to have imprisonment written into it because that's part of, when you go to the magistrate's office, that's general language. It's got to be there. Are there people who complain about snow or feces? Yeah, there really are. We get these complaints that come into the township. This is not stuff that's not out of the ordinary. It does happen here. I think it's, the intention of this ordinance isn't to go out and have somebody go door to door and look at the poop in their backyard or look at the license plate in their car. The intention of this ordinance is if there isn't concern or an issue, that we have the ability to go in, look at it, assess it, and then make a determination on what needs to be done to rectify the issue. So it's not, it's not going to be to the nth degree every time. I think we have to start somewhere. So this is something that we didn't decide to do. This was made, a decision made to move forward with an ordinance like this based on the complaints and issues and concerns we've seen coming into this township over a variety of years. This is not new stuff. So that's, that's my opinion on it. I think the ordinance in and of itself outlines many different issues. Do they happen every single day in this township? Maybe not, but some of them happen rather often and need to be addressed and need to be addressed expeditiously. And there needs to be a means to do it. So this is going to be that tool in the toolbox be able to.
Inspector, for your comment on the motion, first of all, I think in light, many things, if you can agree on 95% of something, you've done pretty good. So the reality is, I'm sure there's going to be a little bit of work in progress, but I think it's a good start. I was certainly very proud of living in South Whitehall Township. I did get around relatively valid quite a bit and I may be biased, but I think South Whitehall is, is the best township to live in. And we can always want to improve and enhance. I think it's what this ordinance does. And so at the end of the day, 95% of something, I think is a pretty good, good start. So that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Thanks for listening. Do you?
Please, please, we have one more question.
Yeah, I just want to respond to the comments that you made about it wasn't the intent in. This is not like a bill that the president signs where you get to do a signing statement saying what the intent is. You can say what the intent is, but as I said, six months from now, there's going to be somebody else studying up there, at least two different people up there, possibly three. So what you say here tonight will not have any lasting effect beyond the end of this year. And Attorney Zader will verify that once all of you are gone or people are here replaced, what will remain is the ordinance and what will be put into effect is the exact wording that you guys are voting on tonight. So you can say it's not the intent to go around and monitor, you know, when a dog goes to the bathroom or how long it's in the backyard, but the fact of the matter is that is what is in the ordinance and that is what somebody can actually enforce. Regardless of what you say your intent is, it's what's in the law and what's in the ordinance. So that's what you're putting into effect. Don't try to buffalo us by saying it's not the intent. What is in the ordinance is what's going to go into effect.
Dean, I'm certainly not trying to buffalo you in any way, shape, or form. The ordinance in and of itself has a series of steps that can be taken. And you look at any one of our ordinances or enforcement things, it's the same thing. It's, it's the way ordinances are written. You don't necessarily go to the highest level of enforcement when, when something happens. So.
And you said this was written to address specific complaints in South Whitehall Township. I thought I heard at the last meeting that this was a cut and paste for ordinances from someplace else. So either it was written specifically for South Whitehall Township or it was a cut and paste. So sir, which one is it?
It's the contained vote. And first, I think is that, you know, the two years I've been here, then I've definitely seen numerous complaints regarding snowshoeing, people throwing snow in the street, people not cleaning up like their dogs, whether it's going to be a fight before for home properties, things of that nature. So taking the complaints that I have received here and also looking at what I've held up previously, it's pretty much the same language, the same complaints that most units have the intent and this type of ordinance. Many municipalities have promised the Commonwealth use this ordinance. So it's a combination of both.
Thank you.
We deal with accumulation of trash and stuff, the car issues, the high school office is pretty standard. It just depends which municipal units use 10 inches, 12 inches, 8 inches, or some that use 6 inches is too high. So I mean, there's a lot of different things and a lot of different municipalities, but basically the language is the same for the same problems that the municipal has.
Do we have any, any other new comments or questions so we can?
I just. I have.
Okay, hold on one second. Commissioner Moore. Sam?
I just have a question. Are most of the problems that you're enforcing, are they generated by a complaint or are they generated by someone that's driving around the township that works to attend complaints? They're generated by? that works to attend complaints? They're generated by?
Yeah, I got a lot of phone calls.
Mr. Wall, please.
Thank you. So, once again, I want to thank Tom and Chief Dorney for all the work that went into this. I think the intent for the ordinance is good. I don't, I don't think it meets the intent exactly based on the comments that I made earlier and others have made. I don't think it's accurate to describe this at 95%. It's, it's at some good percent, but I think it needs some work, some revision based on, instead of it being made. A few of us have highlighted that there's a concern about objectivity. Some paragraphs in here seem to be subjective. So if there could be, you know, some revised language that would help deal with that. I appreciate the clarification about the public officer and appeals officer positions. Along with the ordinance, I, I think it would be great to have a, you have a page to one page job description for those positions. We should be doing that at the board. And these sections that are described as overreach, many people would agree with that. I agree that there's certain things in here that are overreach. But I think you need specific feedback, not just what you heard tonight, but if we do take a step to revise this rather than pass it, we, we need to send you information of specifically, you know, what we think is overreach. But I'd like to push it to table this.
We already have a motion on the floor.
I didn't, I didn't hear. We went to the, we went to the.
Commissioner. Yeah, so we already have a motion on the floor. We have to move on that.
Okay, so we'll see where that passes, and then I'll make a motion to table this for, for rework.
Do you have any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Oh, yeah, I just have a comment.
Can I get your address and your name?
336 Catherine Avenue, 105. And I just want to reiterate, so Commissioner Wolf and Commissioner Kelly said that the language is very vague, and regardless of your intense now commissioner work, different people in the future could have different intentions. I also want to reiterate what Dean Browning said, that this is a massive overreach, and we want to keep Allen Town outside of Southway Mall. And I don't really come to these meetings usually, but I heard about this ordinance, and I came to this one because this is not good. And so I would ask all of you, please vote now on this ordinance.
Are there any other questions? All right, so anything in the chat, Randy?
Nothing in the chat.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor to move forward with the ordinance as written from Commissioner Long. I would second that, I, for reasons that I've already explained. So we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Can I roll call for Commissioner? Commissioner Wall?
No.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton?
No.
Commissioner Kelly?
No.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
The motion does not carry. Commissioner Walsh, would you like to put your motion on the floor?
Thanks.
So we need to table this. No, you have to make a new motion if you want to, if anybody else wants to do it, if you want to table it, and for another motion to table.
Yeah, I make a motion, makes sense.
Yep.
So I, I make a motion to table the ordinance and take a step to make a revision based on comments that were given in person tonight, or any other comments that the board chooses to ignore.
I would second that. And Tom, as the commissioner for the last 18 months, the only complaints that I know about are the ones that residents have reached out to me personally. I think it would be very helpful for this board if we had an idea of the type of complaints you hear. I don't mean every single one with a paragraph of each, but the types of frequencies, if there's any way to report to this board, maybe even quarterly, so we have an understanding of what's going on in the township. Frankly, outside of the complaints of the people that have reached out to me, I have no idea. So I would love to know more about the job that you do, complaints that you hear, so that I can understand what do we need, and how do we fit the needs of the township, which are specific to Southway Hall, and make an ordinance that makes sense to, to help the residents that have had problems to this point, and build from there. That would be my suggestion.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to, to table the ordinance as, as written, and revise with comments and questions proposed this evening and moving forward. So.
I, I just had a point of order question for Attorney Zader. Is it possible, according to Robert's Rules of Order, to table an item that has already been defeated? Or would it be more proper for them, for a, the ordinance to be reworked and reintroduced later as a new ordinance? Again, I'm deferring to you.
If there's any revision to the ordinance, it will have to be readvertised, or there would have to be, at that point in time, a motion to approve if the board wishes at that time. So I view it as a distinction without a difference.
You don't need to do that. Well, what's the difference if we motion to table it? It's not, it's not.
The point is, it's already dead.
It is tabled, we will go back and work on it again. We don't need to direct. Tabling is when we're not going to vote on it.
I'm, I'm a little aware of what tabling is, but we've normally tabled them in the past. So, so it's really, it doesn't matter to me your way. I just want to follow across.
It's, it's been the historical protocol of the board to take that approach. Pragmatically, it's a distinction without a difference. I don't think it's worth arguing about.
So we have a motion to table and a second. Commissioner Wall? All right. Commissioner Long?
No.
Commissioner Sutton?
Yes. Yes, yes, because some of the vibrations are very good.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
I'll, I'll vote yes, because I'd like to see this ordinance come back in some way shape or form. So I, I will vote to bring it back to be reconsidered in some way shape or form. So, but the motion carries.
Of course.
All right. Thank you, Tom, for your, all your hard work.
No problem.
All right. Commissioner Morgan, I have just a question. I know we have quite a few volunteers in the background who want to be sworn in as fire police. Certainly, we can move that up on the agenda. We, we can absolutely, this should be a short meeting, but as per usual, it's not. So I, I agree with you. It would be wonderful to bring them up on the agenda. Thank you. So if everyone agrees this evening, we have, we're going to skip down a little bit into our resolutions for consideration and possible action. This evening, we have some amazing men and women, but that's in the audience in the back. We're going to make respect. Love you guys now. So we have a resolution of, from the Board of Commissioners of Southway Hall Township, confirming individuals nominated by the volunteer fire companies, a special fire police, each for a five-year term. This evening, we have, I apologize if I pronounced the name wrong. We have Captain Leo and Captain Mokul with us this evening. If anyone minds coming up, welcome, welcome. These are the leaders of the team. Right. What I, what I'd like to do this evening, I have Chief Dorney, and if he would just give just a few words on the true importance and value of our fire police and what all of you do each and every day for our community, which we're very grateful for. So Chief, would you like to give a little ditty?
I would be, I would be more than happy to. Yes, I fully support this. Both captains, and we like home crew, Captain Leo, have done a fantastic job, or since, in my three-plus years that I've been here with the township. They are here, they answer every call, they do a phenomenal job, and they have never said no. They are out there, ready, any weather, any time of the day, any incident, and they do a fantastic job. As a matter of fact, during the floods last year, two years ago, I pulled up, and they didn't know it was me because I'm in a non-marred car, and it was one of the newer fire police, and they were extremely helpful without even knowing it was me at first. Then they go, oh, chief, it's you. So it, it's a, it's a test to the character and the professionalism of our residents who give back to our community. You know, and a lot of times, it's thanklessly. They do it, people don't even get to see them. They just, you know, have angry people saying, why can't I drive through there? And they have the utmost professionalism and answer every single call. So they are a huge benefit to the Southway Hall Township Police Department, our fire departments, and our residents. So I commend them, and I am very proud to have them here tonight to watch them get sworn in and be approved of this offer as fire police for Southway Hall Township.
I'd like to add to that. You, all of you are truly quiet, humble heroes, and we are just so blessed to have each and every one of you in our community. Thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for everything you do. So, without further ado, do I hear a motion to move forward with a resolution confirming the nomination for a five-year term of each and every one of our fire police in this. We have the motion on the floor from Commissioner Sutton. Do I hear a second? I'm very excited about it, so I'm going to make it. Second from Commissioner Morgan. Can I have a roll call both, please, your name? Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Thank you, each and every one of you for being here this evening. Glad we could move you up on the agenda a little bit, so.
Thank you.
Good idea. Commissioner Kelly?
Have to stick around if you don't want to. You can quietly exit if you so choose.
Welcome, Sutton. All right, next this evening for consideration, possible action, we are going to go back to our ordinances. We have an ordinance with a request advertised and transmitted to the LVPC. An ordinance amending the Southway Hall Township zoning ordinance by the leading section 350-48N2, no impact home-based business, creating new sections 350-48H5, home-based business, no impact 350-48H4, home-based business, low impact, renumbering existing section 350-48N3, nursing homes to section 350-48N2, renumbering existing section 350-48H4 through H6 to 350-48H6 through H8, to accommodate for the new sections 350, 48, H4, and H5, correct all impacted links within this ordinance, and providing for separability clause, retention of rights to enforce a clause, a repealing clause, and an effective date. Please don't ask me to repeat that again.
You made it. Good job.
If I can interject, Commissioner Morgan, thank you for your again, because this is a zoning ordinance amendment, technically a public hearing, so I will call a public hearing to start. And I would note that for any public hearing, the purpose is twofold. First, it is to inform the public of what this ordinance is, what it's about, and provide an opportunity for public comment. And so Commissioner Morgan has read the introduction to what this ordinance is about. Mr. Manhart will present what the detail is, and from there, an opening opportunity for questions by the board and ultimately the public.
So just to give some background on this ordinance, we had a section of our ordinance called no impact home-based business. Historically, that piece of the ordinance, or that use, did not allow visitation except for specific uses. So we had a lot of people calling in asking if they can do a home-based business for single appointment, like a hairdresser. And they were told no. So that was kind of the historic pattern that we had. And then with COVID, we noticed an increase in those requests. And we had to tell people that it's not what it's all about. So that prompted us to look at the ordinance. We looked at the no impact home-based business, and also MPC, so the municipal planning code speaks directly to no impact home-based businesses. And our existing ordinance did not accurately reflect the no impact home-based business in the MPC. So the first part of this is to adjust the no impact home-based business so that it is consistent with the MPC. The second piece of this is the low impact home-based business. So there is a portion in the whole ordinance for music, music teachers, tutors, and I apologize, I don't remember the other, for free listed. That allowed up to six visitors. And that would be an example of what we consider a low impact home-based business. Also, single visitation, hairdresser, massage therapist, that kind of thing where it's a one-on-one visitation, or low impact. So the idea of no impact is, there's clearly no impact, everything's done in the home. A low impact is something where there may be a visitor, or may be equipment associated with it. So landscapers often are based out of their home. This is a ordinance that allows them to do that. The key component of this ordinance makes those uses a special exception. What a special exception is, is those users have to go to the zoning hearing board. The zoning hearing board has the opportunity to enlist into the specifics of that proposed use, perhaps make specific conditions on that use. The other piece of it being a special exception is it requires notice for neighbors. One of the things we've seen through code enforcement is neighbors may not know what's going on because it, it would have been treated as a permitted use, and it was just a zoning requirement with no notification. This allows the neighbors to be noticed at a zoning hearing board. Any concerns can be expressed at the zoning hearing board. And then also, any conditions are spelled out in the approval for future enforcement, because then we have everything spelled out as approval from the zoning hearing board that they agreed to. So it makes enforcement a lot clearer in that respect. That's kind of the brief overview. Myself and Craig Adams are here to answer questions.
Thank you, Dave. I'll just add, I think this is, this is appropriate timing for this type of consideration and change, especially in light of COVID, and, and the difference in how people are doing business. And certainly, I would hope too, that this would really bring for people who want to have a home-based business, instead of just doing it behind these themes, doing it the right way, that we've made it possible. So I commend you for coming up with this. Makes sense. So with that being said, I will open it up to any questions from the board, for the ordinance and thus this evening for consideration.
This is a question from Tom, Eric, and Southway Hall, for working with businesses and encouraging that grow. I just have the question, is it a necessity that they would have to go for the zoning hearing board?
So for.
Or do they need to work around some of that?
It has to go to the zoning hearing board as a low impact home-based business. So if it's a no impact home-based business, it's just a zoning requirement. So there's criteria that defines the no impact. So if there's some impact, a low impact, then it has to go to the zoning hearing. And some of those are, quote, visitation.
What's the, what's the, I apologize, I'm not knowing this off the top of my head. What, what's the, the cost, or what's the, what's it entail? You don't need an attorney to go in front of the zoning hearing board.
You do. It would fall under, I mean, granted, they need some help here, but it falls under a residential application, not commercial, so that's a lower cost. But I believe it's 250 for the application fee.
Okay, okay. Great, thank you. Any other questions? Just to clarify, I thought during planning, I said it was 350 or something? Was it 250 or 350?
I believe it's 250.
250.
I can check on that to make sure.
Okay, that's what I remember. I could be wrong as well. So reading on the low, I'm sorry, the no impact is a $50 zoning fee. So if someone wants to, needs to fall under the low impact, it will be $250. I know they don't need an attorney, but somebody who doesn't understand process and, and their business may choose to bring out full, just to protect their rights. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. Under the low impact. Under the low impact, it is only permitted in a single detached dwelling. So someone who lives in a twin or a townhouse, who is a music teacher and wants to pay taxes or a pianist and are not allowed to have a low impact business under this.
That's correct.
Okay, and the other provision within here is any automobile or vehicle with a logo is considered equipment or inventory and may not be stored on the property, and it must be stored in the garage while it's on the property. So if someone has a single dwelling and they don't have a garage and they have a logo vehicle, what do they do with it?
They would probably look to build a garage to do that if they wanted to fall under this ordinance. There's also variances that they can get. I'm not sure if that goes in as a regular application or it would be in as a variance application. But those are things that we as staff, as the applications come in, we work with the applications on how best to handle it and if there are any potential issues that we see as staff, we inform them about that and try and come up with solutions.
And just to clarify, one other provision, only one non-resident employee is permitted on the site at a time. That's employee, not, I don't want to say customer, but client, so is that only an actual employee? Or does that mean only one client at a time?
So that's employee.
And how many clients at a time are allowed?
Go on, go on, go on.
I believe that is what is to be brought to the board, the zoning hearing board, and they will by context. We generally require that the applicant bring in some sort of business plan showing hours of operation, how many employees, if any, when the customers would come in, how many at a time, how they would be brought in, one-on-one, by appointment only. And then the zoning hearing board will look at the context of the neighborhood, look at what the business plan is, take into account what the residents who are at the meeting would say, and then render a decision, perhaps even put additional conditions upon the plan. So it's all contextual based on what the testimony given.
And that's one of the sections I kind of provide some context for the zoning hearing board.
Okay, thank you very much.
To answer your earlier questions, you are correct. A special exception for residents who use is $350. The variance is $250. Now, if you had both together, typically what we do is we take the higher of the two and then fold it all into one application. So a special exception with a variance would be the $350.
Thank you. Any other questions? You mean the board?
Yeah. David?
Yes. So I read this in detail, I saw the teachers were stricken in one area. It wasn't clear whether they were headed back in another area. You just mentioned it. Could you just give us the basic description, what the change is for teachers? Are they still allowed? Where are they allowed?
Yeah, so they go, they go out with the no impact because that was not consistent with the MPC. And they go into the low impact.
Okay.
So that was kind of the big difference between the MPC no impact and our no impact. We took that out and addressed it in the lower.
Okay, and where are any financial progress to make these changes?
Well, I mean, one piece of this is, as Commissioner Morgan mentioned, is, you know, you have potentially people doing this under the table, and the idea is to allow them, permit them to do it, and then part of a home-based business in any business now is business privilege. So they go through the business privilege licensing process.
Right.
So it raises the financial.
There was a record of the business, and then one can follow on with that aspect of it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
That's a good comment. I mean, I'll support the ordinance because it's good stuff, right? Don't think it goes far enough. It just, on a realistic side of me, which I tend to be more realist, would say, I don't think this does not encourage people to do the right thing in my personal opinion. You know, the intention was to try to get people to come out of, come into the light, so to speak, you know. Even myself experienced enough to know what needs to get done, but the vast majority of people are just going to continue to do what they're doing. I don't see how that changes in this ordinance, but I get the intention, but I think you didn't want it a little further.
Yeah, and you know, that was some of the stuff that we discussed at the planning commission. And we struck the balance, like, quote, bottom of the balance.
I have one more comment. I listened to the entire discussion at the planning commission, so I want to thank you for making this a fairly short description compared with what occurred at that meeting.
Yes, you're welcome.
Any other questions?
Oh, I was going to make mention to your comment. It probably won't bring many people out of the woodwork, so to speak, but we have had occasion where some of these were brought up through complaints. And for a no impact home-based business, if we get a complaint on something that would fall under post-low impact, right now we have the only one recourse, shut it down. This will at least give us a recourse to say, okay, your neighbors have complained. We've determined that you are operating a business. We now have an avenue for you to legally operate that business.
I guess my point is any, only someone in business understands how hard it is. So for, no, I don't think that should, you know, if people want to go into business, there are a lot of things. Maybe unintentionally, they didn't register whatever the case may be, and so we shouldn't be saying you can't operate. I mean, they're trying to contribute, pushing the table for the bank. So I definitely err more the side of open pluses, I understand that, but at the same time, that was just my comment, so I appreciate, appreciate what you're saying.
Yeah, and under the current ordinance, we had to turn away a lot of people. Why? Basically, tell them that you can't do that, that's my call. So hopefully it allows for a lot of that. And, you know, as the ordinance rose and as we had more experience with it, we can make a decision. Like you said, it's definitely hard.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions from the board, then we can take any further public comments, please.
Anybody from the public stand?
Just one question. So any, any area of the township, a home-based business can be put into. It doesn't have to require a commercial zone.
Aye.
So I'm wondering about it in Winchester, I could put a business in my home.
If you met the criteria.
Yeah, for a, yeah.
Any other questions?
Nothing in the chat? Nothing.
Just want to comment the business is open. It would be. Yes, so one of, I believe it's a chat box on the business report form. It's a home-based, so there is some work in between.
I just heard a question in my mind. So move-in permits in the township, is there a place on our form that we asked a question if they also have a home business? And is that a way that we currently are able to identify, at least on the front end, if someone is coming in to do a business, start, then, I don't mean after the, do we have a vehicle through our moving apartment?
Certainly we'll look at that. Yes, we'll look at that and try and, we'll.
Thank you.
No further questions or comments from the public, ready for a decision or any advertising?
All right. No other comments? I will make a motion to move forward to advertise and transmit to the LVPC the no and low income, uh, no and low income, no impact and low impact home-based business ordinance. We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Morgan and a second from Commissioner Seton. Renee, I think I have a vote. Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton? Commissioner Kelly? No. Commissioner Morgan? Yes. Motion here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. All right. Next this evening for consideration, possible action, we have a variety of resolutions. The first is a resolution granting preliminary final commitment to a major plant entitled proposed flex building, 1215 House and Road. Dave, if you want to introduce which one as well, it would went sat down.
I needed a drink of water.
That's wrong.
So I will give a brief introduction. This is for a proposed flex building at 1215 House and Road. The application is to develop the property located with that address. The plan proposes removing the existing barn and construction of a roughly 90,000 square foot flex building, 89 car parking lot, truck court, and associated stormwater management facilities under 10.7 meters track. Subject of the property is Zone IC1, which is industrial commercial special type limitation. At the May 20th, 2021 meeting, the planning commission recommended approval to the board commissioners with 17 conditions to use three waiver recommendation request. With that, I will hand it over to the applicant.
Soundness, awesome.
Thank you, Blake Marlowe, we have the applicant, I'm happy to be, and Ronaldo, the principal of developer, all of Suizac and Blue Engineering, I am. Just a very brief introduction, a little bit of background on this property.
May I have a kind of any here? You guys here?
Check it out.
If, if you have, I'm not sure how well that's seen before. Go ahead. Yeah.
This parcel is across the street from what used to be Woods Contracting Operation Alameda Woods. It's owned by Lee Woods as was contracted operation. He sold the offices, owned this property for a long time. The property is interesting for lots of reasons. It's a very difficult property to develop because it had a lot of wetlands on it, including wetlands that run right up to of the house and the road. I'll, I'll add one to the search. So one of the things that is happening as a result of this development is that there's a control over wetlands right adjacent to the road. They've been adjacent to the road for 200-plus years and House and Road has caused a problem. The planning commission made a recommendation that developer be responsible for assuring that the road would not, or even fall, eeven, whatever the freezing thing does to a road. As a result of wetlands or detention facilities being near the road, that they take responsibility for that for five years just to make sure that the new facility is not adversely impacting the road. And our clients agree to do that, partly because we don't believe that there's the likelihood of an impact in stormwater pollution in the direction. It's a flex building, there will be ordinarily a user currently unknown. You have a very unusual definition of flex building, so this is not zoning discussion tonight. We'll recognize we'll have to come back and talk to the zoning officer, plan their user, make sure that what is supposed to be the definition of that. With that, I believe that the resolution is clear, we need to do the iteration of this plan and any doubts, I wanted to make sure it's right.
So all the conditions, you said you and your client are agreeable?
Yeah.
Greg, have we received the acceptance of conditions for him for this development? We have it. You could please provide that to Mr. Adams.
Anything else, please? Are you, do you have any questions?
I'll leave the question.
Yeah, are there any questions from the board on this particular action in front of us for consideration?
I have some comments or questions. I reviewed this in detail, so it'll take a while to go through my comments and questions, just so you know ahead of time. I have concerns because there's some significant information that's missing from our package. And there's several major open issues that impact public safety, health, and the environment, potentially the layout. If passed, this resolate, resolution would grant approval before these issues are addressed. I think these issues should be addressed, resolved before approval. And I think also, these issues should be resolved to determine whether there's any impact on the layout. So what I'm saying is, rather than pass this through on the basis that you'll meet the conditions eventually, I think we ought to resolve these issues prior to granting approval. So I'm prepared to go through some of these items in detail. So first in the category of missing information, this question, these questions are probably best addressed to staff with maybe support of the applicant. There's no LVPC review pack, review document or status in this package. Has LVPC reviewed this proposal?
The ordinance is, it's request to advertise and transmit to LVPC.
No, no, no. That's, that was the previous one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I have one of the wrong thing, I apologize. Is that in the packet?
It's not in the package, and I apologize, I'm still learning the processes for these reviews. My understanding is that for a development like this, that the township would do its review and LVPC would do its review. There's nothing in the package about the LVPC review, so.
Correct. Traditionally, I only include in the packet the outstanding items. The LVPC has reviewed this, particularly the Act 167 plan, they say their plan is consistent. So if, if you don't see it in the packet, it has been addressed.
Technically, Greg won't let us go to the planning commission unless they have the LVPC comment. All right, not belated a point though, but there is a document from LVPC.
Yes.
With, with their comments.
Yes.
That we do not have.
Not in the packet, no, we have it in the file. Once again, traditionally, if it's been addressed, I don't include it. I don't include the items that are still outstanding.
All right. Same question regarding PND, was there any PND review for this or was it not necessary?
It's not a PND program.
Right, okay. There's no, it stated that the planning commission reviewed this and offers their approval. There's no planning commission meeting minutes in here that describe any discussion that I've heard at the planning commission.
Typically, I don't include them in the packet. Like, I would, but typically they haven't, have not been included.
Okay. Just, just to go on forward, it would probably be worthwhile, rather than, you know, we have this search for it. Likewise, public safety, commission meeting minutes, any comments they made.
Okay.
All right. I'm going to mention this, but then I'm going to transition into these major open issues. The EP appears to have some outstanding requirements. All right, so major open issues that are not resolved and that could impact the layout. Let me just say, as a side of our own layout, I've been involved with these discussions as a commissioner and a citizen. commissioner and a citizen. It's best to resolve issues that impact layout now rather than later, now before approval rather than after approval. If this is approved, that creates an expectation on your part that you got to pass through and as these conditions get addressed, if there's a need to resolve the layout, well then it's after the fact and then we have a conversation about, well, how do we revise the layout at this late point in time? That's happened time and again here. So I'm recommending that we address issues that impact the layout because it could significantly impact the project. So on wetlands, the major open issues are wetlands, stormwater management, infiltration rate, and then the DEP. I'll, I'll go through each one individually. We'll drop down perhaps at a level of detail and I'll ask some people to comment. So on wetlands, on page seven of this package, there's a statement from Pittcock, Capleta, says the wetlands replacement area are proposed on the east and south sides of the lot. That's a statement of what the situation is. And then on page nine, there's a statement on item D1 and I'm going to have to read it, so I didn't write the whole statement and I'm not going to pull it up in front of me. Basically, it says wetland mitigation proposals should be provided from DEP and the layout could change. So is that in open night? Have we received a wetland mitigation proposal from DEP? Yes or no?
Wetlands, wetland proposal is actually a small portion of the existing wetlands being impacted by the building. And we're proposing, and it's been discussed in detail with our county commissioners and DEP, for a two to one mitigation place on the wetland property. The permitting is underway, but there have been several meetings where they accepted the layout aspects. And they're just going with the normal permit, issue of the normal permit.
The simple question is, do you, do you have anything documented? That documents what you just said?
I, there is a wetland that's all grown up for this project. What we're going to do is we can provide a consultation for a bunch of stuff.
Okay.
If I may respond regarding to that issue, the law's pretty clear, the municipal planning code is pretty clear that if there are third party requirements that is visible, people can't tell about, as a result of those third party approvals, must prove the condition. That, that's all.
Mr. Marles has correctly stated the law and the developer's proceeding at its own risk. If the applicant agency approvals would dictate a change in site plan, it would be necessary for the developer to then come back to the township and deal with that issue. It's the developer's election whether proceed with additional final plan approval pending outside agencies.
Just taking a note. All right, I'll go to stormwater management. So two specific places, comments might be on. Page nine, item D2, stormwater management is unresolved. The layout could change. That's my paragraph. Page 10, pick up item V5, PCG review letter, comments about stormwater management system could change the layout. So are those issues still open?
I believe we received subsequent to our issuance of this letter and a letter from the geotechn engineer accepting the layouts and accepting the obligations of the wetlands and actually recommending approval of the waivers that they're responsible for. So in brief, the issues are resolved. The issues regarding the wetland, excuse me, the geotechnical engineer is resolved. I believe you heard from the engineer that it's accepted with the wetlands consultant fee, not any, or sadness, but they know that the permitting is underway.
Okay. So just enough to you, Tommy, I realize some time has passed here. Your email was dated May 14. What I'm highlighting is all the items that were open on that date. You're saying that since then, they're resolved. These two items are resolved.
Correct, yes. Now, that was the last letter that we issued. I have the last mission, so those documentation that came in subsequent to that.
All right. Next, does anybody here from Hanover? There's a grouping that talks about infiltration. First item says the consultant must still determine and state whether the infiltration loading rates fall in the recommended or not recommended category. And then after that, there was three different statements that refer to test pits and state that data is required for the test pits and upon receipt and review of this data, they'll be able to complete their evaluation. So has that data been received and are those issues resolved?
Hanover, Hanover, your consultant, we provided this. We're about two or three days from getting our end to the US room, which relies almost solely on infiltration. But I can't speak without an over here.
Is there anyone here who has knowledge of the status of these items?
Commissioner Ward?
Commissioner, I'm not sure how long this has been going on. If I can just make a brief comment, I understand how the question's going to be able to be answered ahead of time. If this is a request, we can be able to feel a little more diligent trying to get some answers, questions answered ahead of time just for the sake of it for one's time.
Yeah, thanks for the recommendation. I got this package two days ago and I reviewed it before I got it, so I am doing my due diligence right now. Thank you.
My left is the additional comment?
I'm in the process of going through my review. All right. And by the way, I'm hitting the major comments that could have a significant impact. So here's a comment from the South Whitehall Township planner, Water and Sewer. The applicant is to contact DEP to determine the sewage facility planning requirements for the development. I realize it's another DEP item, but I think it's a different item. Is this still open or is it resolved?
All the required paperwork and forms have filled out and sent to South Whitehall for processing forwarding to DEP and the townships. It's the township's planning department that sent it to DEP, not the other.
Can somebody on South Whitehall Township staff please comment?
If it's their planning model, Michael I has dealt with that for the sewage. I can check with him tomorrow to see if that has been sent out to DEP.
Thank you, Herb. All right. Here's the, the South Whitehall Township planner noted a legal issue. Solicitor and engineer should comment on the MS4 program with regard to any private stormwater management facilities.
Typically, that is done by declaration of covenants for the maintenance of stormwater management facilities, which is typically done prior to plan recording.
It's a document along with developers' agreements that gets taken care of after the commissioners have given additional final plan approval prior to the planning recorded. So in words, it's done later.
This is, this is August 13th of the resolution.
Okay. All right. I've covered what I thought were the major issues. I have many other more detailed issues that I won't go into. I would like to say one thing now. It, it comes back to what I said towards the beginning about potential impact on layout. I see there's many conditions here and most of the conditions say, complete the work, right? In other words, you're obligated to complete the work. There's one that's not here that if the board chooses to approve this, I would like to have this condition added for real reasons and to match expectations. So I don't know whether to do this now or not, but it reads, I make a motion that a condition be added that the layout will be modified if necessary to satisfy the requirements and the other conditions, including but not limited to the wetlands, stormwater management, infiltration rate, DEP requirements, et cetera. So in other words, rather than be silent about this subject of the potential impact on the layout, I think we should have a condition there that says if the layout needs to change, then there's an expectation that will change. That way, we don't get into this situation down the road where, you know, you tell us, oh, we had no idea this would be the impact and now you can't make us change it. Put in this condition and well, we'll set them right straight that if the layout needs to change, then it needs to change. Do you have any issue with that?
No. No, we don't want an issue because we're not allowed to mark it in the catch. So the layout could possibly, to your point, if the layout had to change because of an outside agency permit, that doesn't really care about the rules. So I can report to change it anyway. So it's a condition we can agree to because we've already met the requirements of township. The other agencies, we can't appeal to them.
Okay, so that, that sounds good. To make it easy, you would be agreeable to a, a condition like that?
Yeah.
All right. All right, good. Thank you. All right.
Thanks, I can just add for full clarity, this rarely comes up, but since we're talking about this point, Commissioner Walt and the developer, as Mr. Marles and Mr. Suezak know, if this is approved for what's 97,000 square foot building and outside agency comments would dictate a necessary change and that change could stay within the same footprint but cut off thousands of feet, developer may choose to do that. That kind of site layout change, I wouldn't ordinarily expect to have to come back to the board because it's within the approved footprint and not extending beyond.
That typically views it guilty.
Right.
In other words, my point was for clarity, with the extra condition that Commissioner Walt wanted, I didn't want to get into it, they later on with developer, that should happen. If it stays within the approved footprint but is reduced in size, that's not the type of layout change that Commissioner Walt would have heard.
I honestly wasn't presupposing any particular layout change.
In other words, if you have a rectangle and that rectangle is 90,000 square feet and now you need to notch it and have less than the full rectangle in order to meet an outside agency requirement, that's not the type of change to plan that ordinarily has to back board because this board approved a 90,000 square foot rectangle. And now if it's an 89,000 square foot rectangle that's notched to eliminate a portion, it doesn't mean approved.
Okay, that's a bit of clarification. Someone might want to say, I didn't envision that if this condition goes in, that, that if, you know, a leg change is required like you described, it, it wouldn't come back here. I wasn't anticipating it would. So, so since you commented on that.
I think the minutes can address that without having to get into a position.
Not sure what you just said.
I think adding a condition that the developers agreed to, as you warned, as you always find, is a good idea.
All right.
And I'm saying the clarification that we just discussed that I brought up, I think the minutes are being addressed.
Okay.
Question or answer?
Next one, good. Thank you for taking the time to do that.
Any other questions? Can you open it?
May I make a point?
Absolutely.
Just to address Commissioner Walt's additional condition, it makes sense, but for, for your knowledge in the past, if there have been any outside agency odds or issues that we call it layout changes, usually that's our job and our responsibility and we have in the past recommend either to go back to planning and the board, but to vet any changes that would affect a layout, we would usually bring it back to both of them. So it's a, it's a fine condition, but it has happened in the background of the matches.
All right. So you're saying it would typically be the practice to bring it back? Commissioner Solicitor Sager has said it's not legally required.
It depends again to, to, to Mr. Sager's point, if it's a change out of like, maybe building smaller or not to modify it in any way that would expand it as some facilities, we wouldn't do so. Again, it would be just better if there's a small portion of my owners where it would change much smaller, we won't bring that back with the reorders, but if it does change layout in such that probably changes building changes to an extension, things that we would think would affect the township or would, you would like to see, we would normally bring that. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
Any other questions from you?
I have just a couple of questions. I know that there was, remember this from planning, that there was a conditional use application for a warehouse back in November of 19. Is that still active with this?
No.
This been withdrawn from the township? Thank you. And what type of tenant do you anticipate? Do you have any idea who the type of tenant?
What, what's the case in this market, because the market's so hot, is that you can't, there are no buildings that are built to suit right now, so better than, than we do. Because there's so much demand, both flex space and for warehousing facilities, there has to be a facility available when the customer comes in and wants it. So we're in a very unusual time in the 40 years that I've done this, in the last five or, five or 10 years, because almost everything is speculative and built. That means that, for example, if a flex tenant would come in, that means a layout change that doesn't fit within our 90,000 square foot box, we're going to have to back. And that's not uncommon.
And that means?
To you, because we're building something different from what is shown on the plan unless, as Mr. Sager indicated, we're within that footprint. But like, he gives an example, the, the Amazon facility in former township, Duke Realty built that building, I think it was 60 or 70 million dollars worth of building. Amazon came in and said, we don't like it that way. And we had to tear off the whole front of it, completely redo the building, go back through the land development process because it didn't need to be dependent. But if the box wasn't there to begin with, there wouldn't have been a tenant.
Understood. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Just a follow up. I know at our February planning commission meeting, a neighbor adjacent to this property had a few concerns with runoff and the drainage pit being right at the property line. Have those issues been resolved with the neighbor?
If you recall, I think we were on a conference call, it was during Zoom meeting, and she really explained the direction of the water, the stormwater flow from her apartment.
Yeah.
So is that accurate? Yeah, the property above us actually was no water that flows to her property. She was questioning a very rural corner of our property on the waterway line. We have a basement that says water, but it's actually the water we're in. So a misunderstanding of what that was. It's not stormwater, it's all underground with you.
Okay, so the issues of?
But I believe we satisfied our time.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you very much.
We need to sign off.
Right, there's a chain on the property. And can you speak to the waivers that you're requesting? I missed our, this planning commission meeting, so I didn't hear the explanation of the justification why these waivers should be used. Could you please explain for us?
Yeah, there are three. One has to do with conforming infiltration facilities to send back a hundred feet from the property line. This is a non-conforming situation where storm drainage facilities have been literally within the right way hundreds of years, so we're actually improving the situation. And they can't be pulled back to the full hundred feet. They haven't been pulled back properly, not available, and therefore be taken. So the waiver is not being needed. It's absolutely required in order for anything to be pulled at all. The second has to do with the driveway with contract divvying grants that waiver me goes for turning ratio for movements, necessitating different kinds of driveway. And, oh, you can interrupt the concrete.
Yeah, the third one is, you're typical. It's part of the setup, and we're doing slight volume expansion of our frontage, and we're stormwatering stuff. You do a sidewalk and driveway, there is a constitution of soft product behavior. In this situation, we ask for figure construction that do the head part. In fact, driveway is so wide, the acre to use really to define the entrance since we're building a wide driveway first. Pretty clear what the driveway is, and acre is really not needed. But that's all right.
And just waiver number two, the forty foot driveway, what is the width of the driveway that's being...
Well, that would be, it depends on where you go.
Okay.
The throat of the driveway itself was a pretty robust rock. It flared that, and there are thirty-five foot radius. Basically, over the years when we developed the industrial building, we turned the track to a railway to clean sweep off the road, not have to swing out of the way of traffic. Seventy-five foot radius is by field without front to. So seventy-five foot radius, all of that driveway gets super wide. But it's a long, it just becomes a very long... Driveway itself.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
Nothing in the...
Any in the chat?
Nothing in the chat.
All right. My apologies again for... See what happens when I go out of order and make the wrong things. So then, that all being said, with the additional condition as outlined by Commissioner Walt, do I hear a motion granting preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled, "Proposed Flex Building Twelve Fifteen Housing Row"? We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Morgan, I have a whole lot of questions.
Commissioner Walt?
On the condition that I will submit my condition to you in writing, so it can be added, I vote yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the time.
All right. Next this evening, for consideration and possible action, we have a resolution granting preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled, "Proposed Independent Living Apartments in Luther Crest". Mr. Manhart?
Let's give a brief introduction and then hand it over to the applicant. An application to currently develop a property, both of which have been approved. Plan proposes the construction of a B-story with thirty-seven thousand five hundred square foot addition, gaining seventy-two independent living apartments, removal of one hundred and sixty-one parking spaces, and the addition of eighty-six new apartments. Refurbishments to stormwater management system on a home point six acre portion of the wood. So five acres, so. Center seventeen twenty twenty plan condition recommended approval to board commissioners with sixteen conditions of no waiver. That.
Thank you.
Any measures? My name is Bill Kick. I'm a local authority. I'm a social minister, police, vice president, figure of the icons. And we are here presenting the seventy-four unit independent apartment building. I will provide housing for hundred and twenty to hundred and thirty senior residents in a very tight housing market, so there's much needed improvement for the area. And since you've all seen the plan, we have brought with us tonight our consent to the conditions that were issued as part of the resolution. And I think the only thing I would add is that after packages, the minds that were given waivers request, we do have one waiver request for you, which I'll have to explain. Also answer any other questions that it may have.
So, okay, so there is no package difference than there is a waiver?
There is one waiver request, yeah. You able to get that out there? It should be the one the board likes. If you may have a different, I may have an older version that was emailed to us.
Oh, okay, okay, just confusing. Do you want to speak to the waiver just to summarize?
Sure. The waiver request relates to stormwater management. And the issue is that the soil's on site in this place over the years, so it's currently a filled site. There are no places that are suitable for infiltration techniques for stormwater management. So DEP has acknowledged after fifteen years or so requiring infiltration, no matter what, that it's not always possible, so they've come up with a new concept that requires an extent release to accomplish sites underation requires a very small opening that's the stormwater, so the discharge is come. Your ordinance requires a minimum three-inch diameter opening. We need to, in order to comply with the DPP regulation, use a one-inch diameter opening to release the water slowly. So we're asking for a waiver of a three-inch orifice minimum to find it and to have it on five to one inch to allow for this technique.
And is the man's gonna have their retention on the same side?
It's the same size. It's always big size with the one-inch diameter orifice, it's just that, and that's how we have to do it in compliance with the DPP's regulation. But your ordinance allows for only a three-inch diameter minimum size orifice.
The tension points to be the same size, but discharge is going to be of slower.
Correct, correct.
We can't slow.
Yeah, then it were the larger orifice, yeah. But keep in mind that the footprint of that facility was designed for the smaller orifice. So it's not going to change as a result. I can't begin to speak, Commissioner Walt's potential questions. It's not going to change as a result of what you do. Decreasing in size because it hasn't increased in size. We just need the waiver so that it will be in compliance with the court.
Because of the difference in the one and three inch.
Correct.
Any questions for the board?
Who's had a curiosity is the apartments, is it a rental model or is it a like buying? Anyone else interested in the model, definitely. We're not saying just hard rentals. Somebody is interested in that, we're primarily in that.
Any other questions from the board?
I'm just asked our engineer to come on the waiver request since I haven't had a chance to review it.
Yes, we have actually. It's part of our comments. If you look at the stormwater comments, that was B two in our July fourteenth letter, and I believe it was also listed in a December letter, comment three. It discusses that the minimum requirements for township are three. So we did review the two Mr. Kick's points. We did check to see that the basin would be acceptable with this configuration. We also note that this is a product basin that would be maintained by the applicant. It'll be their responsibility to make any disorifice and any cleaning that's necessary. And originally, at this point, this is another one of these times that DPP has dangerous rules, and our ordinance has not recognized that at this point. It'd be something we'll look into, but as primary the reason for this waiver.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
A comment, of course. Twenty, maybe, of course, a comment. Is there any rule that would make more sense to make the retention on the bigger or bigger?
It's not so much a matter of the size. It's that the lease rate has to be restricted to a minimum that's allowed from that's allowed by the DPP. So we have room that we could expand volume if necessary. But the problem is we can't slow it down unless we use that one-inch diameter orifice to get the rate necessary to comply and manage for this concept that DPP requires. So it's not really a function of the EMO to make it bigger, that's the sort of problem.
Any other questions?
I do want to follow up. There's a note from our engineer that if previously approved Luther Crest Development Plan for two thousand and six, posed a sidewalk between us and Luther Crest Drive, South Gate Court. To date, the sidewalk has not been constructed. Do you have plans since we've embarked on a new project to get that two thousand and six sidewalk completed as well?
Yeah, that's been commented since the onset of the project, and it is a condition. So we're working through the access rights to do that. And we have sidewalk issue for that.
Great. Great. Any other questions from the board? Do you have any questions from the public? In the chat?
Nothing in the chat.
All right. I will make a motion to move forward to grant preliminary final approval to major plan entitled, "Proposed Independent Living Apartments in Luther Crest". Chris, one more second.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Walt. Commissioner Walt?
Aye.
Commissioner Walt?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Yes, I'm sure.
So can you please give me a second to just form a draft?
Twenty Zader's on eight. All right. So we already did Resolution C. So move on to our motion proceeding, get two motions for consideration, possible action. The first is a motion requesting permission to proceed with advertising bid with regard to Bridgeview Terrace Water Main Replacement Project for exonerating.
Good evening, commissioners. South Valley County Township Water Department respectfully request permission to advertise the Bridgeview Water Main Replacement Project. This replacement project will affect the following streets. Cover Bridge Lane, River Road, to Lineville. Courtney Place, Cover Bridge Lane, to the Coliseum. It has to be hit the residents of this area have gone through eight water main breaks due to the aging cast iron pipe. Two will be replacing the cast iron pipe with ductile iron. This project is in the water budget in the amount of five hundred thousand.
Any further? Are there any questions from the board on this particular request this evening? I proceed?
Yes, I have a couple of questions for her. Thank you for your presentation. It looks like this plan, so seven homes are not going to have a duct to water, no water surface? Is that that?
Yes, right now, behind the residents on Lineville, we have an easement that we have a water line, which becomes a nightmare for the water main work. It's on a slope, you can't get to it. If it's bushy, you don't have the equipment. So we are looking to get out of these easements and supply the water off of Cover Bridge Lane, Courtney Place, and some of the taps will come in off of Lineville.
Is this at the expense of the homeowners?
No, the township is going to be doing all that. Once we get everything lined up with the contractor and everything, we will be going to Zader's office because we will need a letter with them to sign off that we can go on their private property to make a connection. We did have a meeting here with residents in this area, and we passed out letters. We had about twelve to fifteen residents show up, and they are very much on board.
Very good, thank you. Just one other question. Your memo showed that the budget in the month was five hundred thousand, but I saw under Bridge Terrace that we have three hundred thousand budget.
Yes, there's three hundred thousand in there. And then since we rejected the Kmart, we did have two hundred thousand for that. So we were going to move that to help get this done, so we could get water done this year for better results.
So you're using the line item, the three hundred thousand from Bridgeview plus the two hundred for the Kmart? We're not doing anything at the Kmart booster station?
No, what we're going to be doing there is we are going to be looking to get the building on the structural engineer, see if we really need to replace that building or can we rehab what we have there. And that way, we don't have to abandon the well there also. We can do it for a lot less money also.
Is that Kmart engineering going to be done this county here?
We are looking to do that this town for the year, yes.
Thank you.
As a note to the Kmart booster station, it is absolutely imperative that we retain that well at the building because of the agreement we have with the Lehigh County Authority. If we shut down wells, we cannot drill anymore.
And we can't look for any more water.
So in light of that comment, then if we're taking the two hundred thousand from the Kmart, what if we have the engineer come in and we need the two hundred thousand dollars for the work we've used our budget allotment for?
The Kmart station had the eight hundred thousand. But without having to build a whole building, everything brand new, it would be three hundred thousand.
But we got, we're gonna have to...
There was three hundred thousand can, can of water from the deal.
Commissioner Kelly, we won't be ready for construction this year to expend those funds, so we'd probably have to correct, we'd have to rebudget.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just a quick one with all that cost discussion. Do you have any estimate or updated estimate for what this might cost? I realize it's just a little bit.
Yeah, we still have to go off of the, we are anticipating around four hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand is going to come back. And then the other fifty thousand will be for the engineering of everything. All right, thank you.
Herb, I think it's important to note too that this is phase one.
Yes.
This is a larger project in the future.
And we'll see, it's in the capex. You'll see that budget time, the second phase of this will be six hundred thousand, they got the rest of the capex.
In the same table?
The Bridgeview Terrace area.
So just a follow-up. So the three hundred thousand we had budgeted, you expected to do the job for that amount of money now it's...
Yeah, so we, the price of ductile iron pipe is, you know... Yes, that's probably how the job will be able to get as much for a garage.
Thank you. So if this, if we're shovel-ready, which it sounds like we pretty much are for this project, we may be able, I think the round is close for Vivian money for, that's bad. And grant money for Vivian for infrastructure projects, water and wastewater. But we may, I mean, we may want to look, we may be eligible for the next round for some of that money. So if you don't have the info on that, I can certainly say...
If you could, I'm not familiar with that grant program, but we can certainly look at it.
With water and wastewater because of, because of the lead mitigation requirements. And there's, and it's not, it doesn't even necessarily have to do with lead. There's a lot of new funding available, and it hasn't been available before. So anything that I see, I'll shoot over to Renee, and she can distribute to you guys as needed. And it's something that's all, but just wanted to throw that out there because it's some new funding that might be dealt. Especially if we're looking at a project in two thousand and twenty-two.
Yes.
Any other questions for her on this project? Any questions from the board?
Nothing in the chat.
All right. Do I hear a motion to move forward, proceed with advertising for the Bridgeview Terrace Water Main Replacement Project? Motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly, second. Second from Commissioner Morgan, I have a whole lot of things. Commissioner Walt?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton? Commissioner Kelly?
Hi.
Commissioner Morgan? Yes, motion carries. Her, thank you.
Thank you for your questions.
All right. Next this evening, we have her consideration for this evening, a motion granting permission for the township to work with PFM Financial Advisors LLC as independent financial advisor teams for I, Ron and all I, LLC at bond council in conjunction with the sale and issuance of the township's general obligation bonds series of.
Evening, Commissioners. Tonight is, is the night that we will present a proposal for a plan to reissue township debt in the form of bonds. And Jamie is plus here from PFM will be here to present that information. Jamie has 20 plus years of experience in municipal debt market, works with over 100 municipalities, which is about 4% of the state municipalities that we have. He has seven years of experience with the township through PFM as well as an existing relationship that extends beyond that. So with that, we'll do it with Jamie.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to have to add some presentations. This is, this is here from my intro. I do a lot of, that would be, this is my. You're still. What was the problem, please?
Yeah, you have to kind of hold it close.
Take your favor. So just a backdrop, my firm serves in, and buys into multiple firms throughout the country. Started in Philadelphia, in Moxon, Pittsburgh, I live in, now I'm in office. And spend most of my time working with the community, ultimately doing projects like this. This started out as a long-term plan to get to where we are today, to look at the permanent financing of some debt and done in the past. The idea would be to take on this building project as well as consolidate some existing debt that you have. There are various reasons why we make these decisions. One, related to some prepayment provisions. Two, give us some time to kind of get through the projects. Three, the market is quite strong, so we're going to kind of question on the panelists, talk about what we can do in the future, ultimately answer any question you may have. So first off, I know it's not working very long. This particular historic danger, you have about $12.5 million in outstanding principal. Nine billion is driven into this building. You have debt associated with the water system. You have some debt that came back in 2014, fingers for fire, and some other things. So there's various different funds that's covered. We're going to touch on clearly the large piece, which is the $9 million. We want to permanently finance that debt in the long term. Just touch on the first page. Generally speaking, we're in a very, very strong interest rate environment. What we've seen since COVID began, we had rates pretty much spike up all by and over quarantine, but over the last year and a half, we started dipping down over a period of time, only due to the maintenance packages, concerns we have at well economy, as well as just kind of getting things moving along. So things correct a little bit here, man, generally speaking, we've been in a very, very strong place to look at permanent. So many of my clients have been locking interest rates for 20 plus years over 2%. That's obviously not very good. I think we're going to be close to that. Page two. So this is a snapshot of what the debt looks like. Number one, a big piece, as I mentioned, is COM four. That is the short-term final construction due to this building. That is 2014 debt, then 2018 debt. 2014, as I mentioned, I think was for various things, including some fire. Final maturity is 2031. 2018 issue ultimately refinanced somewhere. Water debt, I think brought some additional funds at that time. One thing that we're going to do when we look at this, when we consolidate, we're going to do one issuance. We're going to separate by different fund, not extending the debt associated with the old 2014s and 2018s. So make it easier for budgetary purposes, you know, with the one issuance. Most importantly to look on this page, look at the interest rates that you're paying. One is a 2.31% fixed rate, it's going to mature in 2024, then the rate's going to reset if the market is at that time. It has a maximum interest rate of 5.5%. The 2018 issue has an interest rate of 4.06, it's going to reset in 2023, it'll be whatever that is, that's kind of a max of 5.25%. And finally, this particular issue being short-term extreme. The long-term page will have a lot of matters when we go forward. Think what's most important in looking at the 2018, it had a prepayment provision. Didn't want to touch on that debt for a period of time so we can reduce what that prepayment penalty be. In this case, by doing an issuer, reduce that cost from reasons why we're kind of installing an issuer versus. Questions on this page?
I'm going to want to know in more detail what the financing was for 2014 and 2018 beyond what you gave us as a brief description. We don't have to do that now. You can choose when to do that. I'm going to throw up a flow of your presentation, but I would like to know more detail on it.
Number one, did you know any debt that was issued, there's ordinances? So clearly, there's going to be a history with those ordinances described. I'm sure we can pull up this word. Okay, so I think the main page we talked about is page three. This really gives you a snapshot of what we're trying to consider. So number one, when we do a plan like this, we want to look at useful lives of the projects that we're going to do. So number one, we do this, build, building has useful lives of at least 20 years, in the cases, they 40 or so. What we wanted to do is make sure there's a delicate balance of orderability, one, and two, meeting the standards of Commonwealth Pennsylvania rules. By doing this, you started out utilizing 20-year amortization related to the purple section, which is for the building itself. And we'll point to, we're also considering to borrow some additional funds for the Wares Dam Project, same network. It was an electoral piece that was confirmed or new investment by referendum. So conceivably, you're going to finance something, that costs, as well tackle this on at the same time, lock in the interest rates for the project itself. Finally, the red and the blue is really incidentally potential refinancings. Think what's most important here, describe the current debt structure and the interest rates based on budgetary impact. We think we're going to save close to $275,000 in total costs at this time. Obviously, all these estimates are based on current conditions. Things that drive our interest rates will be, will be one, demand and supply market, two, credit readiness, and three, just overall timing. These are good estimates? As we move forward, we'll be able to narrow down what we think the final balance will be. Obviously, we'll be locking in interest rates over the next few months. I want to stop for a second and just point out what the payments may look like. I think it's most important here to look at purple section. We believe the estimates utilizing a 20-year amortization related debt for the building would be approximately $610,000 a year. And related to the dam, about $45,000 a year. And if you change, give or take a couple of dollars depending on what you look at. What was importantly, that refinancing, not extending your debt in any way, will provide you with budgetary savings, since it's a no-brainer by tactic. One thing that we'll do, we do the ordinance. We do not meet standards for certain savings thresholds. We won't refinance the debt. That's one of the things we're going to build into our market and our work results. I serve as your fiduciary. My job is to make sure we get the best deal possible. Doesn't work, we won't do it. Questions?
Could you simply repeat that, this sentence?
Sure. I'm a fiduciary, so I work on your behalf. When we set up an ordinance, we're going to establish certain parameters. Those parameters mostly will be related to meeting the standards of the Commonwealth Pennsylvania, one. Two, meeting the tax standards. You're going to have a separate counsel, they're going to help you figure that out. Third thing you're going to do, those parameters are going to establish a savings threshold related to the refinance. So we'll pick a number that we think makes sense. I'm suggesting utilizing $100,000 to double costs. As long as we meet those standards, we will include that in any refinancing. If the market were to change, you can pull out that particular debt not included in this refinancing. Questions?
I think I had a question on the purple column, the building we financed alone amount that we took was 9 million, so it's sorry, 9,311, page 29.
That's the, that's the amount of proceeds we expect. I can, there's backup details in that page. You'll just go right there in relation to savings. So turn to page 16. So understand, this is one large issue. So when you do a transaction of this style, what we're going to have is not the money to borrow related to the refinance portion, traditionally principal outstanding, interest that you're going to refinance, a home mortgage. There's going to be cost of issuance associated with it, then it's kind of financing method. So this is going to be a bond issue, whether like, this is why we chose a bond issue to start this process, it's really twofold. One, I do a lot of banking. When you're doing something of this term, it's very difficult to get local banks to give you fixed rates for over 15 years in this time. Two, this issuance will be bigger than $10 million. When you have an issuance over $10 million, it's called non-bank qualified. That's a special tax status that any investor that owns your bonds, it can deduct the interest expense associated. That $10 million mark resets every calendar year. So when we did the first transaction, we did it at $9 million, to allow that to be a bank-qualified issue in 2019, knowing it ever could come back to a larger potential consolidation decisions to get non-bank qualified. That rationale allows us to ultimately move forward with a bond issuance because of those reasons. One, the qualified status, and two, term. If we were to shorten the transaction, make it a little smaller, the local banks would probably make it, make it a little more easier to get a transaction done. In this case, given the size and term, this kind of fits into the bottom of our world. Actually, a little question though. As far as the size, when you have a sizing like this, cost of issuance, the borrowing amount that's associated with that, you need to finance certain things. This right now is looking at a potential premium bond structure. Once we go to market, may know if there's a little premium, this down, until we actually go to market. The amount of money necessary to pay off the principal and the associated cost, went to the actual principal that needed. Thus far, the proceeds amount is $9.3 million. In this case, we're going to need a principal balance of $8.1 million, which is obviously less than $9.3, which we're going to utilize, I think, some premium to build this model. That's why it's a little bit lower. What we care about is having enough money to pay off the existing debt as well covering any costs associated with the transaction. That number will be different today versus tomorrow or sometime the pricing differs. Again, these are good estimates to give you an idea of what the payments will be. Ultimately, for you, looking at your budget, you're going to make sure that you are understanding what you're paying to. All the math behind this is going to my job, make sure it works correctly for both state guidelines, your bond council will work on taxes. I can go back to previous page. I'm not sure if that answered your question or not, but in the end, all you really care about is, is there enough money available to pay off the existing debt? Based on this procedure, how we estimate and break down the costs, definitely enough to pay off the debt. Go back to page three. If the township were to consider borrowing additional funds, also something that you may want to consider, this only contemplates the dam project and the existing refinancings. If there are other things you may want to add, you can adjust that. So essentially, for every half million dollars you add, they'll cost you about $45,000. I want to point that out. We're still in the early process of looking at, present additional needs for capital purposes or personal purposes. This right now is a snapshot of the structure is, taking out all the necessary debt associated.
Quick question. What if we wanted to do the opposite? What if we wanted to take out less debt?
Obviously, the decision, you have to refinance the $9 million. Don't want to do the dam project, don't have to do the dam.
Right. We have to refinance the $9 million because the previous agreement says we need to refinance?
There's a maturity.
Okay.
Which is the end of December.
Right.
Of this year.
So let me, let me take a step into how to process this. So there's several things that need to happen in this issue. Unlike, you know, going to get a loan from a bank personally, you can't just walk into a bank and say, I can get some money, get the money within a couple of weeks. With debt like this, we have public issuance, number one, you have to meet guidelines under the state, you have to do proper advertisement, you have to go through the actual process to establish. Be getting a credit rating, working on potential insurance, funding investors, doing official statements, all the other necessary documentation. That process takes time. So one, we want to meet the documents of township's rules, state rules, just doing the transaction. We can do some of the things at the same time. So tonight's view, hopefully, motion to move forward gets that process started. Your ultimate decision to move forward the transaction officially occur potentially at your meeting on the 18th of August. So you'll have a, first, you'll have the advertisement approval, the meeting on the fourth, the approval of the ordinance should you choose to occur on the 18th. That action will allow the finance team to finish up what is necessary and then get to party. He, though, is getting through this process, getting things started, getting the necessary approvals, then when we get to market, you're going to have to wait a little bit until you get your money. That's why we have to kind of work backwards, have a timeline of this establishment. All goes well, we'll have the money prior to December 1st. If that happens, we'll be able to pay back the existing debt.
And we have to say, if all goes well, is that fairly sure? With pressures on the market and what you need to do for us as a township, you're confident that we can do this in a period of time?
Yes, yes. You know, just to give you some, I kind of highlighted, but if you go to page four, this is the timeline we're working on. So what we did is we kind of put all the things necessary associated with doing the transaction, looking at the process that it takes to go through the review process and necessary advertisement, state guidelines. We're looking at the necessary time associated with going through the rating process, and we're also looking at the process and timeline it takes to find investors. Ultimately, once that happens, we also have the process to meet the standards. All of those things can happen starting today. If all goes well, I think we can get it done, obviously, at some time.
And just a follow up, you mentioned that you have to get a credit rating, so do the stuff like that. Can you explain how that?
Sure. No, you don't. So the last time the township went through a credit rating process was 2001. 2001. This is the first time in 20 years that we're attempting to issue bonds. That market is completely different than this market, actually, down. Number one, 2001, most issuers didn't have an underlying credit. Because there were AAA insurers at it. There's not AAA insurers anymore. Now have other insurers that are less than that. So what we're finding now is many issuers have underlying ratings, and they may or may not need insurance, no longer AAA insurance. That said, I think 2001, there wasn't one. You still need to get a rating, that process will take some time. Our goal would be to handle both the rating process, call to the rating agency, we'll get on a phone call with administration, talk about necessary demographics, questions that the rating agency may have. They have certain criteria, certain standards, things that they look at, financial credit worthiness, fund allowances, demographic information, and institutional framework, i.e. Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, it fits its own institutional framework. I believe, based on looking at financials, I believe, what I've seen in the past, also this market area, since I work with, saw in township, original township, a number of surrounding municipalities, I think we're going to fall incredibly with the standards, at least today, probably, I'm hoping in the double late hat. I don't know for sure yet. Obviously, that process will happen. I think we're going to fit in a very good place. I think we're relatively conservative in registries based on what we think we're going to get until we go there.
And one follow up to that, so is a bond rating for a township different than a credit?
Same thing.
Same thing. Thank you.
Can I bring you back to the backend of the schedule?
Sure.
So this says, if you follow this timeline, the process will be complete in mid, mid to end of October. Does that then, is there anything here for that?
Not for establishing a bond issue and finishing going forward. You'll have things like, hang your debt service, very important. Second, you'll also have to follow certain criteria when you're adding public debt. You'll have to provide continued disclosure obligations, which means essentially, you'll provide information to a certain website as public who may own your bonds. Give information every year, happens once a year. Randomly, you'll get some phone calls related to updates about what your creditworthiness would look like. So you're going to get, you know, booties are supposed to be into a credit rating call randomly, to make sure that you're maintaining what she says you're going to do. That's something you'll do. But once you establish the interest rates, through this process, there's nothing else that can change. It's really just kind of monitoring and making sure you follow certain rules. Sometimes when I have issuers that do buildings, I always joke and say, one thing you don't want to do is put a Starbucks in. Second, you put a Starbucks in a building, that's going to make it a taxable issue. So when you have this, you have to follow certain boost issuance criteria, make sure they're maintaining tax-free status. Again, they'll work with you on that. Have your bond council make sure that it works. Certainly, your solicitor will be in love with that. But ultimately, these are the type of things that you'll have to follow.
I'm going to ask a scheduled question again. But thank you for all of that detail deliberation. But this, okay, really simplistically, this says mid to end of October, this prior debt must be paid by end of December. Does that say there's a two-month margin in this schedule?
It's December first.
December first. All right, so, all right, so we're talking about that, right? So this process ends at the end of October, and then one month later, this debt must be paid.
We would pay off at the end of October. That's what we're checking.
All right, good, thank you.
I know there's a lot here, and you're going to speak to me a few times. Really, the concept here is we're going to introduce what we're trying to accomplish here. There are many steps. Since we're working under behalf, we're going to make sure what is right, what is best for the township. I think there's going to be some good things happening. We hope that the market will remain stable. We've had some kind of interesting last week or so into the stock market. We've seen treasury rates drop dramatically. I sold bonds on Monday for an issuer that's Delaware Camper. They received fantastic interest rates. Sold some bonds today, very, very well. This process will take time. These things stay pretty close to what we're thinking about. I think we'll fall within this range. I hope we'll do better than this. Again, I think from a current level, from the administrative side, I think they can handle the debt service payments. One, two, we will have flexibility in the future to prepay or refinance if necessary. That's one thing I did not point out. Municipal bonds have poll provisions on it. With this type of transaction, that will occur within probably seven or eight years. That's going to be an option to occur. We believe we'll be logging at very low register rates, but you will have an option in the future to either do status rate if you want, or if you want to pay down additional principal, you do that as well.
Jimmy, by having that option, does that increase the debt service retribution rate now?
No, no, it's, in Pennsylvania, you issue debt like this, investors are very used to having poll provisions like that. Something of this nature is very normal to have, between a seven and ten-year poll provision.
I have a follow-up. So you talked about non-bank qualified over ten million dollars, so this is a question. If we were just to take the building renovation, it's less than ten million, would we qualify for a bank?
Yes.
For that, huh?
Oh, I'm sorry. We qualify for bank qualified. You can still do bonds bank-qualified, we do them all the time. The rationale for doing this as a consolidation is, we're going to save two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on those interest rates. So rather than doing multiple transactions, paying multiple sets of costs to issuers, this would allow you to do that without really paying a tremendous difference in interest rate. The bank loan question is equivalent. I probably took half my transactions as bank loans. I think the leigh high value is a good area for bank loans. The issue you have is ultimately maturity. Term of this issuance is very, very difficult to get fixed rates. Generally speaking, there's about four banks in the whole market that give you fixed rates for fifteen years at all. Fifteen years is pretty much the lock-in time. Unfortunately, given the size of this, some of the smaller banks are unable to do this on their own, the larger banks can. Banks like Truist, which is from EBT, they can handle something like this. JP Morgan Chase can do something like this. JP Morgan Chase doesn't do anything over the ten years. TD Bank will do after ten years. Sometimes they have to get a little farther, a little longer, depending on relationship or if they get a special exemption. So when you start to see some of the larger banks, that ten to fifteen-year mark is a very, very big place. That's why I think going a little bit longer for purposes of covering expenses and being able to cover useful lives with the transaction, one, usually makes a lot of sense to me, to being able to consolidate the debt, it's also cool for this.
I have a question on the amount for Ware Stan, six hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. We have two hundred thousand dollars already set aside and reserved for that project, as well as having applied for grants. So I don't know, Randy, do you have any idea what the status of my line of this building grant that we applied for?
Typically, we'll hear probably October, November, sometimes December, January, it really depends on the state.
So how did we arrive at six eighty-four, knowing we have two hundred thousand dollars set aside already for that project? And potentially could be getting some help from that?
Yeah, I'll give you two comments on that. So a good example, I worked on a transaction with a global company a few years ago. They had a refinance that we worked on, and they had a, had some problems, they were going to receive female money. So when we did the transaction to refinance, we borrowed the amount of money necessary, because we need that money to cover the project. They were going to get reimbursed. So we built this, the model was, you build it to prepay that debt, it's those grant funds scheme. So conceivably, we can do that here, depending on the timing of when you receive that grant. Take that money and you pay back whatever. So that is the will of the board, we structure the transaction to do that. So that would include the money that we've had in the business to go and control the project.
Right, so we would, we don't need this to say four, we could conceivably do four, maybe four.
Well, I mean, again, we don't necessarily have the final number, so we're in, we're taking the electoral, you got to vote, whatever our referendum was.
Well, the estimate from Michael Baker's presentation was between five fifty, I believe, and seven hundred, so they're pretty much in line there.
Well, I guess they would also say they did that, and construction costs have changed significantly over the last year or so. Again, we don't know what that number, our number is. We, we use the six hundred thousand dollar number simply to put the referendum in.
I have a word fundamentally on Ware Stan, which I didn't want to bring up. I didn't want to bring up until later, because I didn't want to interrupt your presentation. I'll leave the comment quickly now, and maybe we come back to your presentation and questions about your presentation. I think the board needs to discuss whether to even include Ware Stan. Mainly, we haven't approved of the project. I mean, we did a referendum, we have a voters' agreement to borrow six hundred thousand dollars. We're applying for grants, we're not applying for other grants. But fundamentally, this board hasn't approved the project to go ahead. So let's not talk, let's not talk about that right away here, maybe let's come back to that in a moment. That's, that's just one follow-up I have.
And to point that out, I mean, the decision to include that with nine, obviously something you can chime in. We're using this for illustrative purposes to give you an idea of what we should pay.
Right.
I'm not advocating one way or the other. In the end, that is a board decision if you want to do the project. My viewpoint is, if you think you're going to ever need cash, now is the time to include it, because you pay cost efficiency more time. More importantly, interest rates are going to start close. I'm more than willing to come back and finance a second transaction, I just don't think it would make a lot of sense. But obviously, that's a decision of the board.
And I want to win that too. There's also, you know, as Jamie said before, there's also the option and opportunity, certainly to look during the budget period, whether or not there's even more, you know, in that issuance. So this is just one example of how that could play out.
And if the plan is scheduled through, we need to solidify an amount review on this timeline?
You would need to have a maximum parameters established by your being of this eighteen.
So we don't, we don't have to take out that maximum.
That's correct.
So?
So if we give you a maximum, we can go underneath it?
Correct.
That, deciding when the final number, obviously, we need to do that before we price the bonds. So we're expecting to price the bonds by this point, you know, beginning in September. It would be helpful to go a week or two before that.
All right, why, why say it again?
Early September, we'll do this.
Early September.
Okay. This exact subject, I have some comments on this subject from a timing standpoint, but again, I'm going to hold on just a minute. Could, I think you've said this, but I don't understand it completely. So for how one and two, for the two previous loans, you're saying that we should include them in the financing, but the accounting would be separate?
Yes. So if you think about it, you look at your budget holistically, you have various funds that ultimately pay your bills. So even though we're going to issue one bond issue, the bondholders will be paying twice a year interest, once a year principal. From your perspective, your staff's perspective, they're going to be paying that, that's from various funds. So we'll be able to separate that from your, to an extent to show you what you paid from the water fund, what's paid from the general fund, what's paid from financializing.
So we'll write a one check to investors, but in that one check, there'll be three portions. One portion for the fourteen, one portion for the eighteen, one portion for the building loan, et cetera. So after, after ten years, the fourteen portion goes away.
And, and that will give the benefit, while the accounting will continue to line up for each one of these loans?
Concept, yes. Obviously, the loans disappear, but the concept, how to pay back would be the exact, fundamental, the same rate you look at.
Yeah, of the differentiation between the accounting versus financing. Okay.
So really, the only difference you'll see on budgets of the interest rate here is the payments will lower ultimately for the, you know, water fund, to general fund.
Right. Some of the other comments I will make shortly. We're sort of, we're a little bit at the phase, right? It'd be, it'd be nice to, it'd be nice if we had more financial information, if it was closer to the budget cycle. You know, we have to set it down and cope about what we need for budget, more or less. So all these questions, that should be financed more or less, or, I think, because we don't have that info. So one thing that's out there today, we don't have the audit results. We're going to have the audit results shortly. How does that impact the financial interests, the financial institutions' interest in this? How does this impact the credit rates, for example?
So any transaction, will we go out to credit, whether it's an issue of a certain S and P or booties, which are traditional rating agencies, or if we were going to local banks, it's somewhat similar. We provide them audited financial statements, demographic information, and a history of what we believe the future payments will look like. So they can start to work their models to see if this works. So conceivably, we're planning for this, this go out to the financial institutions, i.e. the rating agencies, after we approve the ordinance. Once that happens, it can start to, it takes them about two weeks to begin that process and review what is necessary. We also then come back and this set of questions. Since it's been a number of years since you've gone through the credit rate process, I suspect the call will be a couple hours. We will prepare for that. Spent a lot of my time working on preparation for those set of questions. Generally speaking, what they're looking for, unsurprisingly, is how do things look this year after the pandemic or as the pandemic is hopefully slowing, slowing down? How are you going to pack your question? At Adoree Park, which is your top taxpayer?
Oh.
Uh-oh. Can I talk about? At Adoree Park, we have a share of frequently, it depends, if you have a feature of how confusing it is, maybe you, what kind of clause will that be? Which set of questions are they going to ask you? More importantly, they're going to look at the overall character, how does it look like your townhood? Who are your top employers? How are your tax collections, you collect ninety-seven percent? Was it slower last year? Do you expect it to become a little faster going forward? Mostly my clients, they kind of fall in the same range. They thought it was going to be a lot different unless from a financial standpoint, but things have worked pretty well overall. They're a little bit slower on their, on their planning process, and that's traditionally what happens in this room. So I'm used to those sort of questions, we'll be able to pair this app, and I'll be on the phone.
So will they actually look at the auditor reports, including the auditor opinion? We're just commentary about, you know, policies, procedures. Okay. So if that's not available in the oldest timeframe, that's acceptable. What if it weren't available?
That we may have a conversation, whether we delay something, or if we, if we don't delay so long, we have to make a G B policy.
Okay. Earlier, you mentioned something geared to my heart, which is the fund downs. I've been having this discussion internally. Based on your knowledge of the financial records, again, two thousand and nineteen is still incomplete. Do you believe you have the information to proceed on the fund downs?
Yeah, I think we have the knowledge, issues, they prove enough, I get it. Following this area, if they have a location where you are, if there's stronger levels, that goes well. And if you can see what some of your neighbors look like, the gentile related fund downs, they default in certain criteria. It's not hard to figure out that, they like to look at the queen, as an example. So adding hash, adding reserves is very, very important, because there's a crisis, blood or something. So they will do those sort of things. A lot of my clients, they, they want to pay down and utilize fund downs to various things. I advise them not to do that sometimes, because I'm looking at the bond side, bond role, that's what I care about. You guys obviously sound a bit inside with people, have a delicate balance of maintaining reserves, raising taxes, that you may need to have follow-up issues like that.
All right, thank you.
So just, and just to be clear about the timing and the details, a lot of the details we've worked out, contributing tonight is just permission to approve with, to move forward with the process, to get to that point, where we'll then come back and do another presentation with more details in the future.
Yeah, I mean, I'm giving you a lot of details, and I hope you're getting some of that, that can be some of the questions. I'm not going to answer some of our questions, and I'm glad you're, the neighbor Scott, and I can answer some of the questions, but we'll suddenly back at future board meetings. But certainly, certainly the timing standpoint, this step today is very important. Do we need to get things moving, because we have other aspects associated with it?
So a little bit, what if we didn't want to refinance this much money and, let me, let me ask it a different way. So what if we felt, you know, our budget, or, you know, our planning budget next year, we could find another half million dollars? And we didn't have to finance nine hundred, nine million, but only eight hundred, eighty-four and five hundred. That's doable. We haven't had those conversations yet, but that's doable.
Yeah, once you establish the maximum parameters, that's the most you can do. So you can always go lower, you can always not do certain projects. Obviously, my viewpoint is, with regards to the refinance, is, should do it, because clearly that reduces the expense of the taxpayer. Like, obviously, that's a decision of the board.
Right. So just to mention a couple of other things, and I, I realize there's some batteries around the use of this money. Right, so just, just to mention a couple of other things, and I, I realize there's some batteries around the use of this money. So the American Rescue Plan Act, um, we've received a little over one million dollars in, in one year's time, or we receive another, so. Who we're dollars, we have to, we have to spend that money in the right places, you know, legally. Um, but that's the windfall, if you will. Could be considered as a reason why not to take someone else's debt. Um, I'm not saying it should be, but that's a conversation I think the board should have.
You can't pay down ten with that one.
Okay, hang on.
And we can't have that to fiscal support.
Okay, so that, take that off his table.
Trust me, I get that question all the time.
All right, good. And I, I think later, we're gonna have an update on the campus renovation forecasted costs. We expect it wouldn't tell us to do anything different than look at the nine million dollars.
Yeah, obviously, that's a decision for moving the administration to termination. Obviously, we know we have to pay back the nine million dollar principal downlist, if there's a need for additional funds. If we do that, that's.
All right, so the comment, um, Scott, you just reminded me that, um, what it's project was, it was a nine million dollar loan. We also transferred a million from the dispossibility, are we going to factor that into this?
So we're working with bond counsel on, on determining if that is something the tension, those wants to do. We potentially can fill that into this business. It's not showing it here currently.
One, one more question of a different nature, how are you compensated?
So we serve as advisor, we get paid at the end of a transaction. So if you think about it, each closing costs associated with any transaction, finance from that standpoint. So we get a flat fee based on the work that we do. In addition, there'll be other people, so we've built in this model certain estimates, we think the cost will be, till we kind of get through that process and change a little bit. So conceivably, the credit rating, us, legal fees, bond underwriter, potentially visible bond insurance if needed, other things that go along with transactions, kind of that conclusion here. To, to your question, our fee is a closing cost, we get paid at extra.
Right, thanks.
So that, that's one of those reasons why when you see the bond issuance number, there, that, that, that's, you know, in terms of regards to where we're at, why is.
I should add, I don't make any more or less, or any more. That's why I'm not, I'm a fiduciary, I'm not compensated based on the size of the issue. So if you want less money, that's fine with me. You want more money, I still make the same amount.
Any more questions, Commissioner Wong?
Uh, thank you for taking the time to do that.
There's a lot here, I'm happy you've been talking about it in the future.
Um, we do have one question from the.
I have no questions. I, I've dealt with P F M for twenty-two years, uh, through Parkland School Board, and had, had a hundred of these presentations. Uh, P F M is notorious for being a lot of water, paper, and color, but it's, they are very, very knowledgeable in what they do. And they are the fiduciary, we use Scott Schirr, uh, who's been excellent for Parkland School, as a school board member. Uh, and they do an excellent job. I do a couple of questions, who's your bond underwriter for Southside? You, you never mentioned that one.
So as part of this motion, we are suggesting utilizing Stephen Nichols.
Stephen?
Stephen?
Okay, um, who's he?
I'm sorry. Stephen, it was the firm.
Oh, okay. The, the fourteen and the eighteen bonds that you're gonna pull into the underwriting, are you refinancing them?
Yes.
Are you taking the proceeds and putting them back into, into the, little picture, or are you bringing that money separate outside of the bond issue?
It's, it's a point issuance, having everything together.
Okay, so you're gonna lower those rates?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the public?
And just a little more to deal on the, of that twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. Um, in the fourteen debt, the original issuance was three million dollars. Um, about five hundred thousand was used for a fire truck. Uh, one point one million had various expenses listed in a resolution twenty fourteen sixty-six. Uh, there is a long lineage of expenses for that, if anybody seems to choose to, to look through that. Um, and then about one point three million of that was in another resolution, twenty fifteen dash third eight. Um, in the twenty eighteen debt issuance, that originally was two point four million. Um, and about one point one million of that was due to, uh, repaying, refinancing the existing authority loan with Nest Bank, um, for the waterfront. Uh, about seven hundred thirty thousand was used to repay the fiscal subsidy fund. Um, and then there was about five hundred fifty thousand for various water cap products. So just FYI.
Yeah, I'll add some clarification, I'm pretty certain that the twenty fourteen issue originally three million. All, not all the money was used, it was a drawdown loan, so they have only used one point five, whatever number it is. Or three, you just didn't use it all. You didn't pay interest on it at that time? That's how it's set up.
Is it possible to get that somewhere, take the loan today, a drawdown, where you don't pay interest on the money, because?
Well, first of all, not with the bond issue. Two, various larger institutions don't have that option. Specifically, the ones that give you fixed rates for up to fifteen years. Some of the smaller institutions and other things, you drawdown. That, what we would, we would look at, expense of a drawdown loan versus higher fixed rates versus lower fixed rates without the drawdown, and that works better. Specifically, since most of the money can be paid back, it's something.
Any other questions?
Nothing in the chat? Nope.
Sorry, I'm just.
Well, you were, you were great, you were great at doing the job, and that explained.
Want me to sit around for a little bit, or do you have more to say?
Um, I think, I think that's it for questions for now, thank you. So, um, that being said, and no other questions, um, do I hear a motion this evening granting permission for the council to work with P F M and financial advisors? Do you have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Wong, or a second? Second, second from Commissioner Kelly, and we'll call over to Mr. Man.
Commissioner Wong.
Hi.
Commissioner Wong.
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton. Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Morgan, yes. Motion carries, Jamie, thank you very much. Have a great evening. All right. Next this evening, um, we have under correspondence and information items, under boards and committee meetings. I will just note that our, the advisory committee met, oh, gosh, now I guess.
Monday.
Monday, one day, one day. And we talked about a variety of different projects and the status of those projects. Um, Randy, I'll kind of defer to you to, can we get the highlights, just extended versions?
Put me on the spot.
Very short, like two, two word highlights.
Uh, sure, we, we talked about partnering up with, um, the school district conservation club. Um, possible partnerships with Whitehall Township E A C for some roadside cleanups. Um, let's see here. Updating the GAC webpage to provide more, more GAC facts and, and information to the public in regards to green infrastructure. Uh, and potentially doing a, uh, information display here at the township highlighting a, a lot of the, uh, green infrastructure that went into the campus renovation.
I think we're also anticipating, um, just to kind of brief a little bit, anticipating for the board, um, a possible presentation on the concept only of a community garden sometime in October, so there'll be more to come on that. So the GAC group has been extremely active, it's an amazing group of individuals working on a variety of projects. So more to come with that, our next scheduled meeting for them is August sixteenth. Um, I'll defer to any other, uh, committee meetings that might have happened, um, for compensation.
Um, brief update, finance committee report is effectively the same as last time, uh, from two weeks ago. So, um, the audit status has not changed, the twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen audit financial reports are in progress. Uh, there's no new information about the audited finances on August the fifth. The auditor will present the draft twenty sixteen through nineteen audit reports to the finance committee. And that's the first time we'll have the audit committee to discuss the, the auditor findings.
All right, thank you. Um, I'd like to note that, uh, Monday, July twenty-sixth, the Land Shade, Shade and Tree Commission will meet at ten A M. On Monday, August second, the Public Safety Commission will meet at seven P M. Also like to note that there are, probably there's still vacancies on boards and commissions, civil service, one vacancy, it's an alternate position. Landscape Shade and Tree Commission, we have two vacancies, and our Park and Rec, which are two Portland's positions. Uh, we still have those two that we're working with. Um, I think, Renee, did you have something on zoning matter?
Yeah, um, I was contacted by a solicitor for zoning board, Maria Malane, um, asking for replacements for Mark Loop's, Mark Loop's movement to the planning commission. Two options are to, um, first option would be, we have an alternate in Mr. Lee Salt. Um, would be to move him into a permanent position, out of the alternate position, or to conduct interviews again. I did talk to Lee Salt, and he is interested in transitioning to the permanent zoning hearing board member. So again, it's a pleasure to report what you would like to do at this point. Well, that's, I think, that's a great opportunity, um, you know, I know if he's interested, you've already all interviewed him, he's been through the process. I, I would personally make a motion if he's interested to, to move forward to push into that permanent position on, on the zoning hearing board.
Are there any questions or comments on that?
So we have a motion on the floor to move Lee Salt, um, over because he's very much interested in the permanent position on the zoning hearing board. Or a second, or a second, and we'll.
Can I just ask one question, Solicitor Zader, I believe it's a resolution, so we do not have the resolution prepared tonight, but post this, could we prepare the resolution appointing Mr. Salt to the zoning hearing board since your appointment via resolution?
Yes. Yes, you can. I mean, ordinarily, a resolution course is in writing, its terms are very clear, but this is simple and straightforward, uh, so I have no problem with that.
Uh, Commissioner Wong.
Yes.
Commissioner Wong.
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton.
Yeah.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Morgan. Most appears. And Lee did say he was not able to be here tonight, so I, when I talked to Lee, and again, I didn't, didn't get what was happening, but, um, please, please let, if you get a chance, if we have a shout tomorrow, I'll, I'll. All right, so that will open up for the next time of alternate position, so we'll have to post that on, on the website. Okay, um, we also wanted to announce that a date has been chosen for the premier. Oh, pardon me, your, your, I think, yeah, it is August tenth.
Tenth.
Well, I have a question on that, because the email that we received Monday from staff, what the advertising goes for the newspapers, like, was the tenth and eleventh. We had just put the second date, if comments flow over into the next night, our goal would be that they do not. I mean, I would hope that we can finish in one night, we advertise two nights, just in the event something falls over. Okay, um, I just wanted to comment on that, you did email about that first week of July, and I knew if you responded, but I was not available on the eleventh. Didn't hear anything about it until Monday, so it's clear that this has been established, and now it's at the newspaper. And I'm questioning why were the scheduled second quasi-conditional conditional use here without the full board? It was just, again, trying to finish everything in the tenth, and then they have to file my extension, I believe, if we don't finish on the tenth. Our, uh, final, so to be taken on the eleventh without the full board? No, we were not taking a vote during that hearing. But we were, but we had decided prior to this, no vote will be taken at the, at the hearing. We did, but we also didn't discuss that we do back-to-back meetings when a commissioner was present, so it's important. In my opinion, we have the full board there to hear, whether it's continued testimony from the applicant, from this board, comments from the public, public as an attorney as well. So I will not be present at that meeting, and I let you know immediately when I email was sent up. So we don't hope to meet in the next day, and.
Well, we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it, we're, we're planning for the tenth, well, it's. Would we need to retract and change?
Well, we might need to retract it anyway if the, if the hearing finishes on the tenth, yeah.
Okay, I, a couple comments in support of Daniel Kelly. I think we need to address it tonight, uh, agree we're not meeting without the full board, um, rather than, quote unquote, cross that bridge when we get there. Um, this premier center hearing, uh, it's a quasi-legal conditional approval hearing. Uh, it's one of the most important B O C meetings that we'll have in the entire year. And it's the full board that has the authority and the accountability over Southside attached plan development. So the full board should be present. What do I have to do? I'll make a motion that we will not hold, um, a meeting on a premier center, conditional approval without the full board present. And if Commissioner Kelly cannot be present on August eleventh, then we will not meet on August eleventh. Is there a second?
Cancel the eleventh, it's, it's a big deal, just cancel the eleventh, and we'll, we'll have it on the tenth if it rolls into it, into another day, with the, another new deadline.
And I guess Solicitor Zader, then I think at the eleventh, they need to come back with an extension, because that was the deadline.
It, it was the deadline because of the forty-five day rule under the M P C. So if there's a hearing held on the tenth, which of course expected it will be, and we don't finish it in a need to, to hear it, we would then have another forty-five days. Subject to an overall hundred day cap, and you calculate, so we may have less than forty-five, we wouldn't have to do it on.
And that's not unusual to ask for an extension? They wouldn't have.
Then we wouldn't have to ask for it, we have the right to extend it for.
Okay.
Do we have to be agitated because we're making a change?
No, no.
Okay.
All right, um, correction and discussion items, we don't have anything listed, full business, Renee, anything you want to add to the whole business?
Uh, just, you know, on where's stand, we did get the, um, we are submitting a packet of the partner match to L C C D. So that is going before Friday, so we have that checked, and so that will go for the L C C D partner.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions or comments on the whole business?
Before we move on to, um, the partner reports, I do have a matter to bring up under direction and discussion regarding the restriction on commissioners that we passed last June, chapter fifty. Um, it does state that the board of commissioners may ask questions of township staff for the purposes of inquiry, but not to direct them to do work. And I'm just curious if the township has made any changes to this ordinance. Well, I don't believe the board has made any changes, so. Well, the reason I ask is, um, since the adoption of the ordinance, I have never directed any staff members to do any work. I've directed my request through you, Renee, and copy the full board. However, for the past few months, my ability to speak with township staff has become different, difficult. Um, I had a resident contact me ten days ago with concern, contacted staff member by phone, left a message, um, got a call back. We played phone tag several times, um, I kept calling, no resolution, it's been almost two weeks. And the voicemail I finally got began on Monday, stated, I'm here with Renee, and we will try to get back to you later. It's not the first time that I've contacted a staff member in the last, um, year since this restriction was put into place. I called and asked questions because I had inquiries, because I needed information. For some reason, this particular staff member hasn't been allowed to call me back, and I'm not gonna name who it is, so it's not important. But as a commissioner, one of my responsibilities is to help the members of my community. If they reach out to me with a question, there are times I often call a staff member just to get information to pass to them. So I'm trying to fulfill my role as an elected representative, but I'm not able to do that. So I want to clarify. So I want to clarify publicly for this board, for the public, for whatever staff members are here or may care about this, that can we please clarify, a board member may speak to a staff member for the purpose of inquiry as is stated in the ordinance. Is that correct? Yeah, but again, it's the staff members' comfort level as well. And so, again, do staff understand, because I've heard some comments over the last year, I'm allowed to speak. So I'd like to clarify, maybe as manager, you can let the staff know, we are not allowed to direct work, which we haven't. I can speak for myself. But we are allowed to talk to them and ask them a question. But this has been, and I've had phone calls with you, I call a staff member, my return call has you on with it. It's a, it's a, you know, I have to, I don't even tell, it's not a call, but I have a question from a resident that I need an answer to. And the delay happens that the, the staff member can't call me back because they're trying to coordinate apparently scheduled with you. I understand that, but it's a simple question that I have. Why, I mean, I guess, oh, if it's an email question, you can do this staff member as well. And perhaps a question could get answered more quickly. I, but I like to have a conversation sometimes, but sometimes an email can end up a big variation of that in court.
You finish on.
At, at the end of the day, though, so you're saying that I shouldn't call them, I should just email them? So we're changing this resolution now?
Not changing anything.
Okay, so can we make a notice to the employees that they're allowed to speak to commissioners if they have questions? Because obviously there's some confusion to this ordinance and I don't know why.
It's pointless, you know, and if both of us speak, it puts the manager out of, out of information as well.
So if I have a question for the chief about traffic stuff that somebody wanted to know about, then I can't ask the chief that question.
So I think, I think, Renee, this is a question of what the court saw.
The rule. I agree with all of them. All right, I've had, I've had the same situation where I've pulled, uh, first of all, this was enacted June 3rd, 2020. All right, and as Commissioner Kelly was saying, I've like greatly reduced my number of contacts with staff, including questions. So I personally am invited by this as exactly written, okay? Um, but I want to share, I had the same similar circumstance where I call someone to ask a question and I don't get the call on the Thursday, no call back, no call back on Friday, no call back on Monday. Oh, Renee comes back in the office on Tuesday, I get the call back and Renee's on the line. All right, so there's, there's this three-day delay.
Why don't you just call Renee to begin with and she'll...
Renee was there. Now, now here's, here's, here's my point. You, excuse me, you don't need to raise your hand, it's not an open conversation. Yeah, okay. You, you put this forward and this was enacted...
Who are you referring to? Me personally and the board?
The board.
Right.
Including you.
Yes.
And Joe, and a former commissioner. This was necessary, so you put it forward and it was voted in. We've been following it. This is an ordinance. This states explicitly, except for the purpose of inquiry, the Board of Commissioners and its members shall address the administration to the township only through the township manager, except for inquiry. My translation of that is, we are allowed to call staff and ask questions. It appears as if the staff doesn't understand that, or the staff has been told something different, which is, you may not speak to certain commissioners named Kelly and Wall.
Oh, okay, that's...
And, and you may only speak...
Wait, you're being paranoid.
You may only speak to them if Renee is on the phone. Let's follow this ordinance that Commissioners Morgan said, and a former commissioner put forward. Let's follow it. We should be able to call them and ask questions. Even the most benign question, they're not allowed to speak to us. That's ridiculous, and that's not in accordance with this ordinance. Let's straighten it out. Let's make it simple and straighten it out. We can call, they can...
I don't know why you're directing this at me. I, I, you act like I wrote this and...
I happen to be looking at you.
Well, you're like saying, you, you, you...
You made this ordinance.
I was a part of the group that approved that ordinance, yes. I didn't make that.
You led an effort to put this ordinance back in place.
So please, let's...
I've worked for six years.
All right, Gordon, let's do this. First of all, I don't think this conversation here in a public meeting is appropriate. If there's a question on how the board and how we understand this ordinance and how we should be addressing staff, I think we should have a discussion. This may be something personnel related and I think possibly something we talk about in an executive session where you have very candid conversation, not for this forum. That's my opinion. If I'm wrong, um, attorneys there, please, please correct me. But I don't believe this is something that we should be hashing out right here in a public session.
Solicitor Zader, please refer to the Sunshine Act and what requires an exec session in your answer.
I'll put, I'll put it this way. I, I'm not going to sit here and argue about this tonight at this hour on how we're going to handle this. I would very much entertain a, a, a civil conversation on it, absolutely. Um, but I don't understand, I've done this for 13 years, 13 years, and I have never, even when it wasn't Renee, wasn't the township manager, we had other township managers. I've never had an issue with, if somebody comes to me with a question, a resident or whatever, I've always gone to the township manager. I've said, hey, listen, I got this inquiry, I don't know what to do with it. Can you advise for it, can you respond to it, how do you handle it? I've always put them in the loop. It's the way it should be done. They need to be in the loop. If they bring in a staff member who is, who is an expert in that area, absolutely, so be it. But that's their decision, whether it's Renee or any other township manager.
So, under classification, why does the ordinance say, except for inquiry? I understand any direction for work goes to the township manager who all have them abiding. That's not the question here.
I think it's important for anything because of the fact that we don't know as, as a board. There's a lot of different things going on day in and day out. Renee may be privy or to information that maybe the staff member isn't aware. Maybe Renee got a complaint from somebody else, or there's something very similar that you got a complaint on that that staff member doesn't even know about. So it's very, very important, I think, from a structural standpoint, that, say you got a complaint from a neighbor, I, I'm happy with what, right? And, um, maybe another neighbor made that same complaint, Renee's already aware of it. The staff member which you reach out to isn't. Renee might have already put into motion some sort of resolution on how to handle it. Now, we've intervened and we've bypassed all the people who've been involved in it. I think it's very, very important to maintain that level of organization and keeping people in the loop. It doesn't necessarily mean that the township manager is going to be the one who has to answer all the questions, but she needs to be capable.
Oh, okay, okay. So I'm going to repeat myself. First, this ordinance doesn't say what you said. And if you want to keep people in the loop, keep the full board in the loop.
Okay. Anything else? All right, are we ready to move on? Department reports, Renee, do you have anything?
Um, I don't, and actually Commissioner Wall can talk about the campus renovation. But, um, at this point, we're 1.5% over. I don't have the final numbers yet because, again, we're still waiting for some of our prime contractors' bills because of them going back and forth. So that's where we're at today. And again, hopefully we'll get, um, their own, uh, payment applications. Because we have not received some from our site work in two months. So, again, we do not have all the payment apps at this point for the, for the crimes. So again, hopefully maybe by the August 5th meeting, or whatever, focusing on audits of that and getting the financial budget, we will have more of the payment apps.
Just as a follow-up, Renee, at our finance meeting, I thought you mentioned that, um, Mr. James is from Boyle, wasn't he? But I think we have, we have, I'm thinking for Boyle, Boyle does the prime application. Do we have other, um, department reports to, to present this evening, Renee? I don't know the pleasure of my staff, this is awesome, that are sitting here, so if they want to contribute anything, I...
I, I would just like to mention the comprehensive plan. Um, we started our working group meetings, um, last week. The intention was to stack the meetings so that we could focus on it and keep things fresh in people's minds so that we could wrap it up. Um, so we finished up the second week of meetings, um, that was meeting two for every working group. It involved the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission as subject matter experts. Um, and they presented best practices, things they considered, and tools that they use in regional planning. Um, the meetings that I was involved in went great, they provided great information. Um, so the next step is we take a week, we kind of go through the information we gathered and then we start formulating recommendations. That brings us to the third working group meeting, um, where the working groups will consolidate and make formal recommendations to the Planning Commission, um, for the comp plan update. And one thing that we would like to see is some more involvement in that third meeting. So I want to let everybody know that if you did not attend meeting one and two, or missed two and didn't attend all the meetings, doesn't mean you can't come to three. Um, if you're signed up, please come to three. Even if you're not signed up, contact us, we'll make sure you have the information. Um, we will have the videos available shortly. Um, we're having some technical issues with that, um, but they are available through FTP, so we can get a link to you if you want to see those and you're not on the normal distribution list. So I encourage people to come out for that third meeting. Um, there'll be the work week of August 2nd. Even if you haven't signed up, or you have some friends or acquaintances or neighbors that you think might be interested in the specific topic areas, please have them show up. Thank you, and that's my spiel.
Was it date then selected that first week? Have they selected?
The dates, yeah, so the working group meetings have been kind of scheduled by the working groups. So those meetings have been scheduled. I think there was one that we had to reschedule and bounce around because of the VOC meeting and then night out and we're trying to figure out where to put that one. Yep.
Excellent.
I have a question, Dave.
Yep.
So in one of the first comp plan kickoff meetings, it was the first meeting at Spring House, where I met Todd and Scott. So I, I asked the question, um, when would the township complete the lessons learned on the 2009 comp plan? Um, George was still here and George and over you gave an answer that it would be done. Um, like you said, it would be done like in a later phase, like maybe phase four. Honestly, I thought that was a little odd. Normally you do lessons learned at the beginning, uh, to take advantage of the result. But in any event, you guys said it would be done in phase four. Uh, we haven't seen that yet. So what do you have in mind for producing the, presenting the lessons learned from 2009?
So I, I don't know if we're going to do anything like explicit lessons learned from the 2009 comp plan, but what's occurring and occurred in that first working group meeting is we looked at the 2009 plan and asked questions, what worked, what didn't. Um, so those were all part of that, the Jan Board, if you're in a meeting. Um, so the posted notes kind of looked at what worked and what didn't. Um, it was kind of a fluid thing and it's not a specific, you know, this whole, like a check-off thing. And that's the other piece of it is, that's becoming very apparent, is the need to structure the comprehensive plan moving forward that has that implementation element of it so that we can evaluate as we're moving forward, um, what's working, what's not, if we need to make adjustments. Um, the other piece that's kind of related to that is updating the frequency that we look at the comprehensive plan is another common theme that's been across multiple working groups. So that we have a better idea of if things change, we can react to it and plan for those changes from the future.
Any questions for Dave and the full board? Being in chat? Anybody else from staff, any updates or words?
We're continuing to work on the 2020 public, uh, what the township has to do. We're finishing that up. Um, we're also updating our business privilege database, so we're putting our record into our...
Tony, do you have anything more to add?
Um, I'll make a sure we continue to work. Uh, we're also wrapping up a handful of projects for them to make. It's, uh, some of the bigger projects that went on, went on for the last couple of years, so let's, let's finish.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions for Tony? From the public? All right. We do now have the opportunity for courtesy of the floors. Is there anybody who would like courtesy of the floor this evening?
Commissioner Morgan, move forward, you can move on to that.
You have something, chief?
I do have something.
Great, sorry. I did look for hands, I did not see your hand, go up.
He virtually jumped in.
Go ahead.
It will be very brief. I do want to bring up National Night Out is coming up on August 3rd from 5:00 to 8:00 in Coverbridge Park. Um, we have been working collectively with Parks and Drags and Herb and his guys, and we believe this is going to be the biggest and best that we have had so far. Uh, we have a Billy Joel tribute band coming out. We have a cornhole tournament that has filled up. We've got, I believe, our 32 or 34 teams sign up to do that. Um, we're going to have Hey Rides with Kids, um, a lot of fun. We'll have a lot of officers there to interact with, so I encourage you to come out. Our goal, and I've said this at several meetings now, I know Upper Mac has been kind of the pride of the valley and they have their, their National Night Out, they have amusement parks, they have food trucks, they have all kinds of stuff. So we're trying to be bigger and better, so that's our goal. Um, we have a great community and we want them to come out and enjoy the night with us. And we will have food trucks there as well for, uh, to purchase food. So it will be a good time and, uh, hope to see everybody there.
So it's true, though, that the cornhole is going to replace our historical kickoff tournament?
Yes, I feel as if that, uh, due to the fact that many of our officers participate in that, I believe the risk mitigation is...
I, I understand. It's, it's all about safety. We're not going to, unless we need to start, like really, strong hearts.
Yes, it's much better, yes. So it's going to be a good time. A lot of, it'll bring a lot of other people to see the, the great people, parks and stuff. But I'll see what we have to offer here in South White Lake. So, and one other thing I just want to touch on real quickly is, I want to thank our community. We had an influx of people, with 34 people signed up for the civilian boot academy, starting, uh, first one ever on September 16th. So we're looking forward to get that kicked off. And, uh, also our youth academy, the Advanced Youth Academy starts August 10th and runs through the 13th, and we'll have graduation ceremony here on the 13th, I believe at noon, just like we did with the last one. So, um, you're invited to come out and participate and enjoy. It's a great program, it's a virtual doing, the advanced academy as well, a partner, LCTI. Um, so just trying to work with the school district to start to shepherd some of those kids into that full-on program that they have there. Um, they're a great team up there, they have a great partnership, and we're looking forward to, to really shepherd some kids into that program.
Fantastic, fantastic. All right, any questions for Chief Dorn?
Commissioner Morgan, can I just do a couple weeks?
See, they can't help themselves, go ahead.
Uh, just wanted to give everybody a heads up. We do have a concert down at Coverbridge Park this Friday. We have the Philadelphia Funk Authority coming in at 7:00 p.m. Um, over 400 children are registered in our summer playground program. Uh, we've also collected over 300 survey responses for Kohler Ridge. And in regards to public works, really routine maintenance time of year for us in the parks, keeping up with... Uh, in the parks, keeping up with the ball fields, the grass cutting, trash collection, uh, water department doing our routine testing throughout the water stations. Um, and then the streets and stormwater department, obviously cleaning up our basins, making sure the inlets are repaired and sweeping the streets.
I just know down at the park, um, Public Works is doing a killer job down there. I saw some of the new planters and, and the new bathroom and it's just amazing. Herb and Randy, the team is just doing a pretty jobs.
Thanks.
Um, anybody else before I close out? All right. But we do have the opportunity for courtesy of the floor. Anybody like courtesy of the floor this evening? Sam?
Yeah, I'm going to sit here for the last 15 minutes thinking if I shake it up and say something. I really think you folks are getting together for a year's long. Uh, I've been attending meetings for 30 years. Unfortunately, I've never seen this play like I thought it would be. I know two commissioners here seem to be frustrated and not be able to get answers. But I think I saw firstly, I agree with Commissioner Morgan that it should have been done in a private setting.
Absolutely.
I'm going to ask you to please remember why you're here. You're here to serve the people of Southway Hall Township. And I hope that you can all get together and, uh, get that accomplished.
Thank you, Sam.
Appreciate you hearing me out.
I, I hope for the same as well, thank you. Anybody else for courtesy of the floor? All right, invoices and purchasing requisitions have been reviewed by the township manager and the director of finance. We do need a motion this evening to authorize that for checks be issued to pay our bills disavowing. Do I hear said motion? Um, we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly, order second. Commissioner Seton, if I have a roll call, please, Renee. Commissioner Wong.
Yes.
Commissioner Wong. Commissioner Seton. Commissioner Kelly. Commissioner Morgan. Yes, motion carries. We have no executive session, I do. Oh, we do have an executive session. So why don't we do this? If they want to, I will, um, request a motion for adjournment and then we can go into executive session.
Point of order. Please tell or public the reason for the executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're going into executive session, session to discuss what is planned. Very good, thank you. Um, motion, we had a motion for adjournment. Commissioner Kelly, down in a second. I'll be second, I'm on paper, aye. Well, she carries, executive session.